I hereby call the February 2nd, 2015, meeting of the zoning board of adjustment to order at 1:30 PM and establish that a quorum is present with five members. Has the board had an opportunity to read over the minutes, the draft of the minutes, from January the 5th, 2015, and January the 12th, 2015? And if so, are there any changes or corrections to these minutes? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, made by Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. Turner, to approve the minutes. All those in favor? We'll do a show of hands on everything through this meeting. The next agenda, Adam, concerns a hearing and discussion or decision of an appeal that alleges error in a decision or determination made by the Planning and Development Services Director for the City of San Angelo specifically. And let me stop here just a second. If you have a cellphone, put it on silent or vibrator, turn it off if you would, please. An appeal made by Jesse Martinez, Ed Hall, Mark Thiemann, Dennis Graffa, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, dated October the 31st, 2014, alleging error in the written determination of the Planning and Development Services Director dated October the 10th, 2014, that a proposed silica frac sand operation is permitted in the light manufacturing zoning district under the zoning ordinance of the City of San Angelo on property described as 5.510 acre tract occupying the J. Ebert survey 680, abstract 0172, number 39, Orient Branch City, and SAISD in San Angelo, Tom Green County, Texas, owned by Lee Fluger, DBA Southwest Orient Properties LLC. As part of the public hearing for this item, I will ask that there be a formal identification of all the parties involved in this manner. I would like to acknowledge that Patrick Howard, Planning and Development Services Director, is present in his capacity as Director and as Board Secretary. I would also like to acknowledge that Senior Assistant City Attorney Dan Saluri is present as counsel for the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The following individuals were designated as parties in interest to the appeal established at the regular meeting of the ZBA held on December the 1st, 2014. Jesse Martinez, Mark Thiemann, Dennis Graffa, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, Lee Fluger. I would like each identified party to approach the podium individually and state their name and whether or not they are represented by counsel, naming the attorney if represented. Mr. Jesse Martinez, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jesse Martinez, and I am being represented by Attorney Guy Choat.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Mark Thiemann, please come to the podium.
Yes, my name is Mark Thiemann, and I'm represented by Attorney Guy Choat.
Thank you, Mr. Thiemann. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Mr. Dennis Graffa, please come to the podium.
Good afternoon. I am Dennis Graffa, and I am being represented by Guy Choat.
Thank you, Mr. Graffa. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Mr. Chris Cornell, please come to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Chris Cornell. I'm represented by Guy Choat.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Got one right. Mr. H.R. Wardlaw III, please come to the podium.
For the record, my name is H.R. Wardlaw III, and I am representing myself, for better or worse.
Thank you, Mr. Wardlaw. Mr. Lee Fluger, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lee Fluger. I am manager of Southwest Orient Properties LLC. I'm represented by Mr. Sam Allen and Mindy Ward.
I would like each attorney identified by any of the parties in interest to step to the podium, identify himself, and confirm the individual persons or groups that he represents. Mr. Guy Choat, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Guy Choat. I'm an attorney in San Angelo with Webb, Stokes &amp; Sparks. I represent Chris Cornell, Mark Thiemann, Dennis Graffa, and Jesse Martinez in this appeal.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sam Allen, please come to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman members. My name is Sam Allen. I'm a partner with Jackson Walker LLP. I, along with Mindy Ward, act as counsel for Southwest Orient Properties LLC and its member and manager, Lee Fluger.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mindy Ward, would you like to come to the podium, please?
My name is Mindy Ward, and I'm representing Mr. Lee Fluger and Southwest Orient Properties LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. I will now read the order in which today's board proceedings on this appeal shall take place. After I have read through the list, I will ask the board members for their agreement with the order of the proceedings. First, there will be an identification of documents constituting the record on appeal to the board. Second, there will be an identification and admission as evidence of prefiled documents and any additional documents offered into evidence. Third, there will be a presentation by the Planning and Development Services Director. The director shall be allowed up to one-half hour for his presentation. At the conclusion of the presentation by the Planning and Development Services Director, the chair shall ask if any party in interest would like to present in writing any questions that they would like the chair to ask the director. The board will have discretion to ask, restate, or not ask the question. Fourth, there shall be presentations by the identified parties in interest made in the following manner. A, the appellant's Jesse Martinez, Mark Thiemann, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, and Dennis Graffa, represented by Guy Choat Esquire, shall be allowed up to one and a half hours for their presentation. The applicant, Lee Fluger, represented by Sam Allen Esquire, shall be allowed up to one and one-half hours, and Mindy Ward. No party or counsel shall interrupt a presentation or another party except upon first being recognized by the chair and permitted that opportunity. Individual board members may direct questions to any individual testifying before the board or to any counsel. At the conclusion...
Mr. Chair, you needed to include Mr. H.R. Wardlaw III in the list of appellants.
Didn't I?
Yes.
I believe I did, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I didn't, let me reread the appellant's Jesse Martinez, Mark Thiemann, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, and Dennis Graffa. If I didn't mention you, Mr. Wardlaw, apologize. I thought I did. At the conclusion of testimony from each witness testifying on behalf of a party in interest, the chair shall ask if any opposing party in interest would like to present in writing any question that would like to ask the chair of the witness. The board shall have discretion to ask, restate, or not to ask the question. Fifth, individual members of the public who have signed up to testify shall be allowed up to three minutes, subject to additional time necessary to respond to questions that any board member may ask. Sixth, each party in interest shall be allotted up to 10 minutes for any rebuttal or to add points not previously covered. Seventh, the board members may ask any further questions of any party in interest or their attorney, testifying, member of the public, senior assistant attorney, or the Planning and Development Services Director. Eighth, the chair will announce the close of the evidentiary presentation and argument portion of the proceedings. Ninth, board members shall proceed with discussion and deliberation in open session to address findings of fact supported by evidence presented at the hearing applicable under the zoning ordinance. Tenth, the chair will call for a motion to affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the Planning and Development Services Director with supporting findings of fact applicable under the zoning ordinance. Per the City of San Angelo's Code of Ordinances, Section 2.07.02(c)(1), four votes are required to reverse the decision or determination of the director. The chair shall then announce the second, take the vote, and announce the vote and result. Do I have the concurrence of the board members with this order of the proceedings?
I agree.
Agreed.
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 I do have one question that you mentioned, sir. Attorney representing the board, you're not representing anybody else, or are you?
Exactly. No, I'm only here to provide legal services to the board.
All right, we will now commence with the admission of record on appeal and identification and mission of documentary evidence. Mr. Howard, as the Board Secretary, please identify the record on appeal, beginning with the zoning verification letter dated August the 11th, 2014, and through the application for interpretation of zoning ordinance dated October the 31st, 2014, that was utilized as a form for the appeal.
Mr. Chair, I submit as official record the following items. The August 11th, 2014 zoning verification letter. The letter dated October 9th that served as an appeal of the zoning verification letter that was dated August the 11th. The response to the appeal of the zoning verification letter that was provided, that was dated October the 10th. And lastly, an appeal to the zoning board of adjustment of the letter that was submitted related to such activity.
Are you through, sir?
That is it.
Thank you. As Chair, I hereby acknowledge that copies of the record on appeal to the board have been provided to each board member and have been available to the parties in interest, their counsel, and the public through the Board Secretary. There will now be an identification of documents filed with the Board Secretary with sufficient copies for each board member prior to the hearing in conformance with the ZBA bylaws. Mr. Howard, please identify the name of the party in interest and the documents which were prefiled pursuant to Section 5.10 of the bylaws.
This item was submitted on 1/12/2015, H.R. Wardlaw III. It is the city zoning ordinances in question, and he provided copies of those zoning ordinances The next item also submitted on the 12th from Mr. Wardlaw was silica frac sand transloading operations, relevant facts. The third item was a number of photos of pinnacle sands operation located on Hughes Street, also dated on 1/12, from Mr. Wardlaw. The next item from Mr. Wardlaw was a business petition against proposed frac sand operation, and it is a petition from individuals opposing the operation. That's also dated 1/12. And lastly, on 1/12, there was newspaper articles, I'm sorry, silica sand hazards facts sheets, and that was also dated on the 12th. One more item. Newspaper articles on oil and gas industry, three articles submitted on the 12th by Mr. Those were all of the items that were submitted by the appellant.
Okay. I'll now rule on the admissibility of the documents submitted by that party in interest. It's my determination that all of this can be admitted as evidence. I'll ask the board members whether any member does not agree with that ruling. Okay, we'll admit those as evidence? Mr. Howard, will you identify the next party?
Yes. There was one packet, which is an extensive PowerPoint presentation provided to us on January the 30th by Mr. Sam Allen, and the PowerPoint outlines a number of items that provide an overview of the property in question, the zoning, and the like.
And when will we see that?
We've provided copies to you.
Is that the copies that we have?
Yes, sir. We have copies of these already.
Okay.
But I have the official copy here for the record.
All right. It's my ruling that that be admitted into evidence. Does the board, any board member disagree? All right, that's admitted. What else do we have?
We did have a packet of materials submitted by Mr. Mayfield, who is not an applicant or an appellant, and it provides information regarding workman's compensation related to his business, which is adjacent to the subject property. It was not, again, provided by either the applicant or the appellant, so that has been provided to you all ahead of time. If you all elect to consider that information as well.
I don't know the relevance of that, but I don't have any problem with admitting it as evidence. Does any board member disagree with that?
No, I think it just speaks to rights where you have proximity to silica sand operation the best I can remember.
What else, Mr. Howard?
That's all.
No.
That's all we have, sir. Insofar as prefiled documents are concerned.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. There will now be a presentation by the Planning and Development Services Director. Mr. Howard, you have one-half hour to make that presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I might, with reference to the information that was submitted by Mr. Mayfield, I'm not certain, I'm not comfortable with it being submitted. I don't see how it's relevant to what we're trying to do. I do understand his position and wanting that information to be considered, but for the purpose of this meeting, I'm not sure that it would be prudent to do so.
Okay, well, we'll take it to a vote then. Does anybody else have any discussion on that matter? Are you making the motion?
Mr. Chair, I was informed that at this time, all non-prefiled documents to be considered as evidentiary should be also submitted at this time.
Well, if I can address the chair, I understand that there were some DVDs that were submitted, but there were not copies provided for the board, and the understanding was that those would be hailed, and if, either at the presentation or at this time, whatever is the pleasure of the board, you could address those DVDs.
I think we'll address those at the presentation if they want to admit them into evidence.
They can offer them at the time.
There were one letter in addition to the DVDs.
If the board wants to take any documentary evidence at this time, you know, again, it's at your pleasure, but the rule was for the copies to be provided so that you would have it ahead of time just to expedite the hearing. However, again, you could take it now, or you could reserve and have it at the time of the presentation for that party.
We're only looking at things that have already been provided to us right now. If they want to present something as evidence at their presentation, they can do so. We don't have time at this point to sit here and read everything, anyway. If they hadn't already presented it to us, we're going to devote our attention to what's being said, not try to read letters and documents. Mr. Adams has concerns about the last item by Mr. Mayfield being presented as evidence. This doesn't require a supermajority, it only requires a majority. Do we need to have a motion for that, or do we just vote on it? All right, Mr. Adams?
I make a motion that the evidence submitted by Mr. Mayfield not be admitted into evidence.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I have a second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. John. All those in favor of not allowing that to be admitted as evidence, raise your hand.
Are we not going to be able to discuss that in a second?
I thought we just opened that and no one had anything else to say. Did you want to say something?
No, you made a motion in a second, and then we moved to vote.
Okay.
I just want to ask our attorney, do you see any problem with that? I mean, admitting it, I mean, I'm trying to understand why it's a problem.
The board is going to take public comment. A citizen could submit comment in writing, and it would be up to the chair whether to accept that, and you as a board whether or not to accept that. I don't know if Mr. Mayfield is here, but, okay, so, the same is with respect to a party, if you want to reserve that, and he wants to sign in for public comment and introduce it that way, or if it's your pleasure, then you could...
My position is that...
You've seen it ahead of time, so you could admit it at this time.
Each board member can give whatever weight they want to to it. We've already been presented with this information, we've already read it, so if it's going to be any factor in our decision-making process, it might as well be admitted as evidence and open to the public.
Because it could be introduced verbally and in print in just a minute, so, I mean, what's the advantage of turning it off here and then it comes right back in a minute? I don't understand where the danger is in its...
Well, that's a question for Mr. Adams, then.
Yes.
The materials that I read related to workman's compensation and insurance liabilities as they relate to Mr. Mayfield's business. That is not what we're here to consider.
If he can show that these problems are present because of a neighboring business, then we are going to consider that.
Okay, then, my motion stands, so if it passes, it passes, and if it doesn't, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't.
Okay, fair enough. So the motion made by Mr. Adams was to not allow the documents by Mr. Mayfield, and we have a motion by Mr. Adams and seconded by Mr. John. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. We have two. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, motion fails. So it will be admitted as evidence. All right, Mr. Howard, are you ready to make your presentation?
Good afternoon. Just want to provide you a brief overview of the enabling legislation that allows for zoning and planning to take place in the City of San Angelo. Chapters 211 and 213 of the local government code authorize municipalities to adopt a comprehensive plan. That guys the growth and development of our city. Our comprehensive plan was first adopted in 2003 and subsequently updated, modified in 2009. Our zoning ordinance, however, was adopted in 1940 and has last been updated in the year 2000, about 15 years ago. Related to the subject property, just for context, it was originally zoned F, and at the time of the previous zoning ordinance, F was the most inclusive ordinance, which means that all less intensive uses were allowed in addition to the most intensive use, which is manufacturing, and that was F, and that was in 1940. With the 2000 update to the zoning ordinance, that area became light manufacturing, or ML. So it's been ML since the year 2000. So essentially, what happens, just to give you an overview, is we have 10 simple steps that we follow when we look at verifying a zoning, and so these are those. The property is first confirmed whether it's within the city or the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and that's the three and a half miles outside of the city's boundaries, and you're able to do some planning, although zoning doesn't apply in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. We look at the future land use, which suggests the highest and best use of the property, which may or may not be consistent with the zoning, but it talks about, in the future, what should this property be? What is the property zoning designation? Obviously, that regulates what can and cannot be constructed, developed, operating on the site. Fourthly, we look at, we ensure that the area is or is not within the river corridor or the historic overlay, and understand that those items will typically go through before the design and historic review board, because we have additional standards that may apply in those cases. We look to ensure that the property is not bound by a special use, a conditional use, or a variance, and if so, we would take appropriate steps to notify the property owner of such. We compare the proposed use, as the applicant describes it. We compare that to our Section 310 of our ordinance, which is a use table, and I'll show you an example of what that looks like. So at that point, we would look at the use category within Section 310 and ensure that what's being proposed falls within one of those categories most appropriately. We would compare the use regulations for the use category in Section 312 of the ordinance through 317, and these are the use categories, and we ensure that we are aligning it with the appropriate use category. We want to know if there are any specific standards for use that's found in Article 4 within the zoning ordinance, and those are specific standards, performance standards and the like, that will apply in certain cases, and so we will verify whether the proposed use falls within one of the specific use standards as well. And lastly, we want to know if the use is allowed by right or by conditional use, which means it needs planning commission approval with conditions that are developed by the applicant and maybe the staff and the commission, or by a special use, which has to get approval by city council, from city council. So the property in question, again, first question was, was it within the city, and it certainly was. We looked at the future land use designation, which means, based on the comprehensive plan, which is developed by the citizenry and approved by city council, the highest and best use of the property was deemed as commercial, which means that is the recommended zoning for the area. However, we know that since 2000, the area's been zoned as light manufacturing, which is obviously more intense than what the land use recommendation as per the 2009 comprehensive plan suggests. And the property was not in the river corridor or historic overlay, and so that was assured. There was no special use or conditional use or variance approval that was necessary to commence the activity, and so we move on to number six. So what we did in this case is we compared the proposed use to our use table. So the applicant provided us a definition of what they intended on doing... So the applicant provided us a definition of what they intended on doing. They verbiage suggested that it was transloading and storing of products used in the oil and gas industry, including frac sand. So we look at the use categories outlined and try to identify what the most appropriate use is. Is it residential? We'll know. Is it industrial, commercial, industrial, industrial, I'm sorry, institutional, civic, commercial, industrial, other? And we deemed it to be industrial, as per the described use. So this is just an example of what the use table looks like. You see the industrial use categories, as I showed in the previous slide, and then you would look at the activity to figure out, based on the definition, which use category closely, most closely aligns with that activity. And then, as you can see on the use table, you see the residential and non-residential uses, ML being one of those, and you would look and see if it's allowed by right or by conditional use or by a special use, as I stated earlier. So the next step is that we find the use category in 310 that most represents the proposed use. So we've now deemed it as, it's an industrial use, it's not a residential use, it's not institutional. We've deemed it as industrial, and so within the industrial use category, you have these categories in which they could fall within, and they all have specific definitions that coincide with that activity. Is it an industrial service, manufacturing production light, manufacturing production heavy, manufacturing craft worked by artisan, warehouse and freight movement, waste-related uses, and wholesale trade? Based on the short definition and the characteristics described, we deem the activity to be warehouse and freight movement. So again, showing the proposed use, as articulated earlier, we look at the short definition for warehouse and freight movement, and it speaks to firms involved in the storage or movement of goods. And then it goes on further to describe in further detail the characteristics of that activity for warehouse and freight movement. Firms are involved in the storage and movement of goods for themselves or other firms. Goods are generally delivered to other firms or for the final consumer. And then it gives some examples: wholesale distribution centers, truck or air freight terminals, freight forwarding services, gasoline and petroleum product terminals, and the stockpiling of sand, gravel, or other aggregate materials. However, there are some exceptions, which suggest that these activities, although they may meet the definition and characteristics, are those things that would not be allowed within this use category. Uses that involve the transfer or storage of solid or liquid waste are classified as waste-related uses, and as you can recall, that's another one of the use categories. Many warehouses are classified as self-storage uses, which has a different set of regulations. Warehouse or freight facilities characterized by stapling or storage of livestock shall be classified as heavy manufacturing and production. And so, while it may meet the definition outlined earlier, these are exceptions, which means these are excluded from that use category. You can stop me at any point if you have any questions.
We'll let you finish.
So then we look and see if there are any specific use standards that's outlined in Article 4. As you can see in Article 4, there are specific use standards that address the industrial services use category, manufacturing production use category, manufacturing craft worked by artisans category, and waste-related uses category. However, warehouse and freight movement has no specific use standards that apply specifically to that activity. So we deem there to be no, nothing in the way of specific use standards that apply in this case. And lastly, we look and see if the proposed use is allowed by right or by conditional use or special use in the zoning district. So for the warehouse and freight movement, which we've identified as being the appropriate use category, given our alignment with the definition, based on the proposed use provided to us by the applicant, you see that warehouse and freight is allowed by right in heavy commercial, central business district, office and warehouse, light manufacturing, which is the subject, which is the zoning of the subject property, heavy manufacturing, general commercial, heavy commercial, and only a conditional use is required when it's, when it falls within general commercial. So again, in summary, we determine the use to be within warehouse and freight, that no exceptions applied in this case, there were no specific use standards outlined in Article 4, and the zoning of the subject property would allow for that activity to Any questions?
All right, first of all, Mr. Wardlaw, do you have any questions you'd like to submit to the Board in writing?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little short on copies, but I...
We'll pass it down. So you have more than a question or two?
Go fast.
Eighteen questions, to be exact. I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to take a 10-minute break, and I'm going to read these questions over and allow the Board each time to read the questions over, and then we'll resume. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Okay, Mr. Howard, got your thinking cap on?
Yes, sir, I do.
Your public, these are Mr. Wardlaw's questions. The Board will ask their questions at the end of this. Your public position in the past has been that the proposed silica frac sand operation on Hill Street of Mr. Fluger, DBA Southwest Orient Properties LLC, would be similar to the Pinnacle Sands operation on Hughes Street in San Angelo. Is this still your position?
Sir, the activities from first glance are similar in nature, however, they may fall under a different Texas Administrative Code, so with respect to the idea of fracking or transloading of sand, these are similar activities. However, the specifics related to the production and the operation in and of itself, I've never suggested that those two are similar.
Okay. In response to the November 13th, 2014, open records request of Guy D. Choep representing, requesting copies of all emails, documents, applications, explanations, discussions, or other available data in the city's files relating to the proposed transloading facility, you furnished the following two items. Are these attached items the only written communications in your files between Mr. Fluger and the City of San Angelo Planning Division Apartment 2W? And one of them says email dated August the 8th, 2014, from Lee Fluger to Jeff Fisher. The second one is letter dated August the 11th, 2014, from Jeff Fisher to Lee Fluger.
Sir, to my knowledge, these are only two official items of correspondence specifically related to the activity. The first email was for clarification, and the second email provided what would be the form of the zoning verification letter. The email on August the 8th clarified the proposed use, and there was some dialogue back and forth regarding that specific use.
But it was all one email? It's all listed in one...
It was two different emails specifically related to this activity.
One says letter dated August the 11th.
Right, it was a, it was a letter attached to an email.
Okay. Your position is that the current zoning ordinance allows operation of the proposed frac sand operation on Hill Street, however, isn't it your position that under proper land use principle, that such operation does not fit at the Hill Street location? And if the Hill Street location does not fit proper land use principles, please explain in detail why this is the case, based on your professional opinion.
Okay, wonderful. Well, as I talked about before, in 2009, there was a comprehensive plan update, and in the comprehensive plan update, the area in question was identified for commercial for its future land use designation, which suggests that the highest and best use of the property is deemed, in fact, commercial. However, the property is zoned light manufacturing. So again, based on the feedback from the citizenry and ultimately going to City Council for approval, what was determined that is that this property is more appropriate for a commercial designation.
Okay. Mr. Wardlaw, we're going to take out five and six due to relevance, and we're going to move on down to question seven.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that he answered my question.
Well, he, Mr. Howard, would you like to elaborate any further on that, or are you finished?
I can reiterate what I said. The comprehensive plan guides future growth and development for the city. It's a process that we go through involving stakeholders, and ultimately, that goes to City Council. And during that time, there was dialogue, and the discussion was that commercial designation would be most appropriate. That was ultimately adopted by City Council, and that's what we use as our guiding principles related to the activity. In terms of, from a, from a community standpoint, I agree with the designation that was placed on the property, that it's most likely appropriate for a commercial activity, consistent with what the plan says.
Thank you. Okay, number seven. Please read Section 305 of the zoning ordinance to the members of the ZBA and explain what language in Section 305B and C require you to place the proposed silica frac sand operation in light manufacturing.
Okay, so Section 305 has manufacturing industrial district intent statements. I can read through the entire thing if you want. It has three, A, B, and C, office warehouse district...
Just B and C.
Light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing. B reads as follows: "The light manufacturing district is intended to provide opportunities for businesses in processing, manufacturing, storage, and service industries, each of which are characterized by a relatively low degree of nuisance and adverse impact on neighboring property." C says, "The heavy manufacturing district is intended to provide opportunities for processing and manufacturing that is inherently noxious or dangerous due to the chemicals or processes involved. Outdoor storage is allowed." In response to the intent statements, we use that as an overall broad guidance related to the activity or the proposed use. However, we also would use the use table that I showed you in Section 310, that goes further into identifying the specific activity and aligning it with appropriate, with appropriate use. Additionally, I would go and look at 316, which provides information regarding characteristics and further defines the activity, once you've determined that it's an industrial use. So not only can you would use, I mean, the zoning ordinance is iterative, so it's not, it's not, you don't look at it just in isolation, you look at it in context. So you have to look at all the applicable sections, one, 305, also 310, 316, we would look at Article 4 in some cases, as I talked about in the presentation. So this is a further explanation of the activity. So you do your best job of aligning that with the definitions outlined in the zoning ordinance, based on what the applicant is proposing.
Okay.
I want to change that word because that's correct. It's not... I'm going to change it last to allow. He's not classifying it, it's already classified.
Okay. Question eight. Prior to determining that Mr. Fluger's sand transloading facility should be allowed as a light manufacturing activity, were you aware that a sand transloading facility already existed in San Angelo in a zoning area classified as heavy manufacturing?
That's correct. There is a transloading activity that's allowed in heavy manufacturing.
Mr. Chairman, that's not even a question. It says prior to determination, you decided, yeah, there is one.
The answer is yes.
Mr. Wardlaw, first of all, we want to keep this in order, but Mr. Howard's going to answer the questions whatever way he wants to. We'll take from that, if he doesn't answer the question, then I guess we don't have an answer to the question, but I'll ask it, and I can't squeeze it out of him. He's going to answer what he answers. Prior to determining that Mr. Fluger's sand transloading facility should be classified as a light manufacturing activity, had you personally ever seen a sand transloading facility in operation?
Sir, I've, even prior to this activity, I saw the activity on Hughes Street, and prior to coming here in the city south area of San Antonio, near similar activities of oil and gas industry, there are transloading facilities in the city south area of San Antonio. I have personally been involved in looking at and observing the operation of a transloading facility. So prior to coming here, I was familiar with transloading, as the Eagle Ford Shale is quite an expansive project and has similar activities as we're seeing out here in West Texas.
Thank you. Ten. Prior to determining that Mr. Fluger's sand transloading facility should be classified as light manufacturing activity, had you seen the transloading facility in operation in Barnhart?
No, sir. I was able to view the operation at Barnhart after the appeal was submitted.
Okay. Eleven. Prior to determining that Mr. Fluger's sand transloading facility should be classified as a light manufacturing activity, had you seen the sand transloading facility in operation out at Hughes Street?
Yes, sir. As mentioned earlier, when you asked about an activity in number, maybe number eight, that's the same facility that I was able to, that I've seen.
As prior to determining?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me ask a question here.
Sure.
Is it something you can save till the end?
No, I can save it. I think, I will, you know.
Prior to the time of your decision, did Mr. Fluger or anyone acting on his behalf show you or your department a silica frac sand transloading facility that makes you confident that there will be no vibration transmitted by his operations through the ground that are discernible beyond the lot line?
No, sir. I am not a subject matter expert related to noise, vibration, and so, no, sir. That was not, that was not done.
Okay. Thirteen. Prior to the time of your decision, did Mr. Fluger or anyone acting on his behalf show you or your department a silica frac sand transloading facility that makes you confident that there will be no noise from the trucks or train that will be objectionable due to intermittence beat frequency or shrillness?
No, sir.
Prior to the time of your decision, did Mr. Fluger or anyone acting on his behalf show you or your department a silica frac sand transloading facility that makes you confident that there will be no visible emissions of air pollutants of any kind at ground level past the lot line?
No, sir.
Prior to the time of your decision, did Mr. Fluger or anyone acting on his behalf show you or your department a silica frac sand transloading facility that makes you confident that no particulate matter will be allowed to become airborne?
No, sir.
Prior to the time of your decision, did Mr. Fluger or anyone acting on his behalf show you or your department a silica frac sand transloading facility that makes you confident that there will be no odors associated with the emission of diesel from the trucks that will be parked and idling while transloading or waiting to transload?
No, sir.
On September the 17th, 2014, in an interview with Stephanie Garland with KLST, did you state that the silica frac sand that Mr. Fluger would be transloading would be free of any hazardous material?
Yes, sir, it appears that I did. As, when, in reference to the comment being made, it was basing that on what the zoning ordinance is determined to be hazardous and malodorous, such that the effects are so noxious that it would require it to be in the heavy manufacturing. So the context of the discussion was really about what the appropriate classification was, and based on the level of hazard, I said that it was not, that this was not hazardous. But we're not talking about a TCEQ or any terms that may be related to a measure of such, because that's not something that falls within our purview.
Thank you. Last question, last question from Mr. Wardlaw. In reviewing the prefiled management safety data sheet MSDS, letter from John Harvey, M.D., and OSHA, O-S-H-A Hazard Alert for silica sand, do you have any doubt now that the material we are dealing with is, in fact, a hazardous material?
Again, sir, that's, that's, no, sir, that's not something that I'm aware of. That's not something that I'm aware of.
Okay. Questions from the board, and we'll start with Mr. Rourke.
I warned you. Is the use of equipment in this zoning category specified? In other words, is there a specificity to the equipment that has to be utilized? Its sophistication, its, you know, cutting-edge technology and all that? Or is the Hill Street plant one example in the thing we have in here from Sam, the other? I mean, is there everything in between? Are there any... You said there were no requirements when we were talking about the zoning, no overlying thing. So, I'm wondering, because one of the things been put forth is that this would not be operated as the Hill Street property is, which I have no doubt of that. And I'm not even going to discuss Barnhart. But is there in fact, in just the zoning, any requirement that anybody use any level of equipment beyond just what TCEQ would require?
You're correct in that statement. We don't... The zoning ordinance doesn't specify in this case the specific type of equipment used. However, TCEQ does have three administrative codes that they apply toward this activity. And so, they have different standards for those based on the operation itself. We corresponded with TCEQ regarding the activity and the required permits. We were instructed that Rule 106-148 applied to this activity based on the operation itself. And so... But again, the short answer to your question is no. There is not any specifics related to the activity itself that falls within the purview of the zoning ordinance that we are to make a determination on.
Okay. In these... There were several questions back here on the back. First one was, I think, between 11 and 12. It said, "With respect to the next five questions pertaining to general performance standards, in Section 416 of the city zoning ordinance, please answer the following." And there's a series of these. Prior to the time of your decision, did Mr. Fluger or anyone act on his behalf? You or your department frac sand transloading facility that makes you confident there will be no vibration at some? And you said you were no expert, but you did not do any research that you mentioned. So, in dealing with something you don't really know much more about than what you saw in San Antonio, would you not be a little uncomfortable approving something in a downzoned area or a less restrictive area that you're really not familiar with?
No, sir. I mean, quite frankly, as I went through the process of talking about how we arrive at a decision related to the activity, if we were determined the activity to be manufacturing and production, however, which has those specific use standards applied toward that end, we would in fact look at... Do some research related to the activity to ensure that to... Within our purview, we could make some reasonable determination as to such. As you know, performance standards require there to be activity commencing, and so, I mean, it's very difficult to make a determination about what will be when nothing is commencing. However, you can make some comparisons to similar types of activities. However, we determined it to be warehouse and freight, which meant there would be no processing on site. And so, in that case, we did not see those standards applying related to the activity, which talks about noise and the like. So, that's why there was no research done on that activity, because we didn't determine that to be associated with the activity of warehouse and freight movement.
Well, and interestingly enough, there's also not going to be any manufacturing taking place, but yet this is written up under light or heavy manufacturing, which I find interesting that the ordinance doesn't. Back on the TCEQ, I think we talked about the two documents y'all were furnished. One of them was 106-148, Material Uploading, and the other was 106-145, which was Bulk Sand.
Correct.
Handling. And I was curious if you have any understanding of why it would fall under Material Uploading rather than Bulk Sand Handling, which sounds like exactly what it is.
Well, I have a letter from Mike Wilson from TCEQ I could read that talks about the rational basis for such. If you'd like that, I just happen to have a copy of it with me.
I think you sent me one.
Yes, sir. And he gave an explanation of how he made the determination, so that's...
That's a short letter. Why don't you go ahead and read that?
It's pretty long, so I'm just going to...
It's a one pager, isn't it?
It's one page.
It's small and it's marketed.
Small font. Thank you... Mr. Howard, thank you for including me in the CC in your email. I understand there are some questions regarding the use of Permit by Rule, PBR 106-148, in relation to authorization of this frac sand transloading facility. I believe a number of the requirements in 106-148, such as not storing bulk materials on-site, equivalent control technologies, and the maintenance of in-plant roads and vehicle work areas were discussed in the attached email you have all seen. The issue currently in question is whether or not sand can qualify within the list of materials approved for handling within this PBR, Permit by Rule. First, PBR 106-148 was not written with the intent to specifically exclude frac sand. When PBR 106-148 was originally written, the review considered the types of materials typically handled and transported at that time. This included sand. The type of sand common to reviews in this timeframe was raw sand or sand that had been quarried or mined from the earth that has not yet been washed, sized, or otherwise processed. When these PBRs were written, frac sand was not a consideration, and there were no facilities processing or handling frac sand that were aware of at... That we were aware of at the time. Further, frac sand is a product that is cleaned and sized to specific industry tolerances, normally much greater than 40 microns in size. Particulate matter is that smaller than 40 microns may be airborne, and particulate matter smaller than 10 micron is inhalable. Frac sand typically does not contain the fine particulate or the other debris that are found in raw sand and that are controlled when the sand is wet. Given these considerations, frac sand would not be considered a fine, dry material. Finally, Title 30 of the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 342.2.1, parentheses 2, defines aggregates. Aggregates: Any commonly recognized construction material originating from an aggregate production operation from which an operator extracts dimensioned stone, crushed and broken limestone, crushed and broken granite, crushed and broken stone, not elsewhere classified, construction sand and gravel, industrial sand, dirt, soil, or caliche. For purposes of this chapter, the term aggregate does not include clay or shale mined for use in manufacturing structural clay products. Aggregate is one of the materials allowed in 106-148. The definition of aggregate includes industrial sand. Frac sand is a type of industrial sand. I hope this helps explain the determination that 106-148 is an appropriate authorization mechanism for this facility type. Please let me know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Mike Wilson, P.E., Air Permits Division, Office of Air, State of Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Rourke?
Yeah. And that was... And was this email something that was given to the folks who were filing the appeal early on? Or have they ever seen that?
Not this email specifically, no, sir.
Okay. And in that discussion there, which was also confusing to me, he said it falls under aggregate material, and we've been told that this is pure 100%, unadulterated, one thing, sand, frac sand. So, is that just by title that they include that in?
That's correct.
So, it doesn't really have anything to do with what it is, does it? And there was... In reviewing the prefiled management safety data sheet letter from John Harvey, have you not seen that?
No, sir.
Okay. So, you haven't read that particular thing?
Again, and that wouldn't be something that would specifically be submitted to us, per se, as it relates to the activity allowed on the site.
Unless the activity was actually producing hazardous material?
That's correct.
And then the sand is in itself what's supposed to be hazardous, not anything that's contained in it?
That's correct. And then we would... It would... We would determine it to fall within another category.
Okay.
Mr. John, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Adams? Mr. Turner?
Just a point of clarification, I think. When we're discussing the difference between the comprehensive plan and zoning, isn't it the case that when you have zoning in place, no matter what the comprehensive plan, land use plan, vision plan, all these other plans are proposing for the future, don't you have to base any decision, ruling, et cetera, on what the zoning is? No matter what we might like the zoning to be, you have to go with what is and is not? Is that not the case?
That's correct, sir. So, again, the zoning of the property is light manufacturing. The future land use map suggests that it should be commercial. However, the property is on light manufacturing, so we would have to look at proposed use in light of what the existing zoning allows for.
So, you couldn't make a decision based on what the city has said they'd like it to be? They asked to be based on what it is?
Correct. Typically, what would happen in this case, obviously, all of the city is zoned. And so, if someone were to propose an activity that was not allowed within existing zoning, then you would look at the future land use map to make some determination about what you would recommend for that activity. And so, in this case, he was only asking for a zoning verification letter, not asking to rezone the property.
Okay. Mr. Rourke?
In the light manufacturing category, if there are, as I think we've heard, no overriding restrictions on its use and so on, then I might understand that the frac sand transloading facility could locate essentially anywhere in light manufacturing area in the city, including the central business district and all these other places.
According to the determination, as you could... I'll go back to the slide. It does suggest that the activity can commence in other zoning classifications.
By right.
Based on the way it's written.
In one conditional area where...
And, right. In a general commercial, there is a conditional use that is applied, which means additional conditions have to be approved... Will be approved at the planning commission level.
And we don't really have a map showing us where those districts are relative to the city in general?
We do have a map. We don't have it with us. However, certainly, we can provide that to you. But they are scattered throughout the city, primarily in the north and the northwest areas of the city. You'll find most of the industrial areas. However, as you know, there's this industrial area that happens to be in a different area within the city. So, I would say it's probably atypical that you'd find such an area, although along railroads, you would typically find that, in some cases, to be the case. But again, most of the areas that are industrial generally have been, in most cases, within the northern and northwest portion of the area. And I guess staff's trying to show me a map. However, you wouldn't be able to see that. But you can see that the areas in purple are the areas that are zoned industrial. Oh, someone's looking up front. Oh, the areas in blue. And see, I can't even see from over here. Someone's... So, anyway, they're scattered throughout the city. And again, these have been in place since the zoning ordinance in 2000, where there was converted from the 1940 zoning ordinance.
And the only restriction that I'm reading in there, or the basic one, is that it cannot have any hazardous waste?
Not exactly. I mean, there are... Well, what happens is you have to look at each use in and of itself. Look at how it's defined, and then you need to liken it to whatever use category. So, there are... Again, there are... Within industrial uses is manufacturing, production, crafts by artisans, waste-related, and wholesale. So, they all come with their own set of conditions and standards.
But the warehouse and freight, I'm understanding you couldn't put hazardous waste in a...
Correct. That was one of the exceptions. You're correct.
But you could store any manner of hazardous material.
Right. As it says here...
So, we could have a radioactive material. We could have stuff that's always carried around the city on hazardous transportation. So, any of that could actually go into this warehouse and manufacturing if there's no other restrictions on it that I can see.
No, sir. They... You are... You... No, that's correct. I mean, they... It talks about the exceptions here. And so, they... Depending on the activity itself, again, we would look at the specific activity and look at what seems to be most appropriate. We, for all intents and purposes, would probably not deem that to be warehouse and freight specifically related to what the type of activity is, per se.
But the actual language there does not restrict the use... I mean, the warehousing and storage of hazardous material, only hazardous waste. Is that not correct?
Just tell me what it is. Right. Yeah, that's what's... Okay. Well, yeah, number eight. So...
But they could still be hazardous materials, liquid or solid? Yeah?
Yeah.
But your waste relation is not for storage and so on, is it? It's for...
Right. Again, well, let me further explain. We don't show... We don't give the details of the other types of uses. Again, we deemed it warehouse and freight. So, again, specifically related to the use, there are other stipulations related to the activity. So, warehouse and freight movement alone or storage wouldn't necessarily constitute that this activity falls within warehouse and freight. So, if it is a deemed waste-related activity, it falls within another use category. So, in that case, we would not determine it to be warehouse and freight, even though the activity is moving. You are moving and storing warehouse and freight.
So, you have a lot of leeway in where you park these things in that zoning ordinance?
Well, you are looking at the standards, and you're looking at the activity, and you're trying to align the activity specifically with what is being performed. And so, as you look at the definitions for manufacturing and production, it is assumed that activities are being produced and processed on-site. And that's pretty clear. And in fact, I have the definition... I just so happen to have the definition provided for you. So, manufacturing and production looks at firms involving the heavy manufacturing production or fabrication of goods. And then the... For the light, it talks about firms involving assembly light manufacturing production, fabrication, or packaging of goods. And so, then it gives general characteristics for both. And so, we looked at those characteristics of manufacturing and production, heavy and light, in addition to those that I showed you earlier of warehouse and freight movement. And based on the definitions, the characteristics, we liken that to be more in line with warehouse and freight movement, because those materials were not being produced on-site.
Okay. Thank you.
One further question. Again, as part of clarification, isn't the definition or one of the restrictions on any light manufacturing that it has to be minimal nuisance or minimal adverse impact?
No, sir. That's a general description that talks about what manufacturing... Just like I were to describe to you, what is residential or what is commercial? You have a general description about what the intent statement is, and then you use your use table and your... And the use regulations to further define that activity. And so, you're talking... You go from the macro to the micro as it relates to the zoning ordinance. Again, it's comprehensive. You look at each of the applicable sections to try to align whatever the proposed activity is with what's in the zoning ordinance. And that's what we use as a basis. So, generally speaking, this is what light and manufacturing is. This is heavy. But when you determine an activity, you look at the use table and the use, not so much the zoning. And then you will look if, in fact, the use is appropriate. Then you look at the zoning to see if the zoning is consistent with whatever it's... What's on the ground, or if the future land use map suggests that that's an okay zoning. So, in this case, if, say for instance, if the act... If this property were zoned residential, for that matter, and we determine the activity to be appropriate for a commercial activity, and the future land use map said it was commercial was okay, then we would recommend for that individual that he could rezone the property to commercial. Obviously, it has to go through planning commission and city council.
Actually, that's not... That's kind of avoiding the content of my question, which my question is, if you have a zoning that basically by definition says that it is supposed to be minimizing nuisance and adverse conditions, you're telling me that in a... to be minimizing nuisance and adverse conditions, you're telling me that in a warehouse and freight situation, those go out the window, and the nuisance and adverse impact can be whatever it happens to be based on something that happens to be in this Chinese menu of a matrix table?
The way the zoning ordinance is written, and you have to go by the zoning ordinance, not based on anything else, the zoning ordinance does not deem warehouse and freight movement to be a heavy manufacturing activity, and therefore is suggesting that those use standards regarding noise don't apply in that case. So, yes, I mean, in that respect, you have to look at the zoning ordinance. We're not talking about things external to the zoning ordinance that suggest otherwise. The zoning ordinance gives clear definition on what is allowed and what is not allowed. And so, in the zoning ordinance, warehouse and freight is allowed, warehouse and freight movement is allowed in light manufacturing.
So, in effect, you're telling me that there's an oversight, that they do not have any standards of performance that would prevent warehouse and freight from becoming a severe nuisance or having a major adverse impact?
If you're asking about my opinion regarding the zoning ordinance, I think there are several things in the zoning ordinance that could use revamping. There certainly could provide more clarity related to some of these activities and the concerns that folks have relating some of these activities. So, yes, there could be provisions in the zoning ordinance that would be more germane to all of the industrial uses. However, in this case, it doesn't, it doesn't speak to that in that respect.
Satisfied, Mr. Turner?
That's all for right now.
Thank you. All right. Does the applicant like to, or the party in interest for the applicant like to present in writing any questions that they would like me as chair to ask of the witness?
May I approach?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask you to give my hand right. I hope this is eligible. There are two questions.
Three-wail?
Email.
Email you read today in the open records response you gave to Mr. Choate?
Let me ask council if that was in that. The email that I read, was that in the open? Was that part of the response?
I don't know. I wasn't part of it.
Sir, I have to confirm that. I'm not absolutely sure if it was or was not. It's dated October the 22nd. I'm not sure what the date of the opens record request was. However, if it occurred before that date, it should be included. I don't have it in front of me.
How long will it take to figure that out?
We would.
How about right now? How about right now? Boy, that is a man running.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. So, the, yes, sir, it was. It was included in the opens record.
Okay. When did you provide that to him?
Just one second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It would be sufficient for my purposes if approximately, if you simply gave the approximately date.
Okay.
If you remember the date, you can put that down. Or even the year. I'm sorry. I'm not making fun. Just so that it's been provided of at least a couple of weeks in advance.
Yes, sir. I was trying to find a specific date. Obviously, we didn't bring those there, but the applicant put in the request, and we delivered that to them in December.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more questions from the board for Mr. Howard? Thank you, Mr. Howard. We're going to. Okay. Next, we're going to have presentations by the parties, but we're going to take another break, about 10 minutes or so.
I admire your state of ears.
Okay. There will now be a presentation by each party in interest. No party or council shall interrupt a presentation of another party except upon first being recognized by the chair and permitted that opportunity. Individual board members may direct questions to any individual testifying before the board or to any council. At the conclusion of testimony from each witness testifying on behalf of a party in interest, the chair will ask if any opposing party in interest would like to present in writing any question that they would like the chair to ask of the witness. The board shall have discretion to ask, restate, or not ask the question. The appellant, Mr. Jesse Martinez, Mark Teeman, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, and Dennis Graffa, represented by Guy Choate Esquire, shall now be allowed to speak for up to one and a half hours. Mr. Choate, would you approach the podium?
I will approach, sure. But you could remind the chair that Mr. Wardlaw is going to be representing himself, and they'll share their time in one way or another.
Well, I won't be taking time. There's been a stipulation between Mr. Fluger.
Sorry, you need to get closer to the mic.
There's been a stipulation between Mr. Fluger and his counsel, Mr. Allen, that there's not going to be a sand loading transplant, transloading plant put at the Hill Street location. There will be a, there will be a, we can present a, the basis of that agreement, that does not obviate the appeal for purposes of Mr. Wardlaw. He wants to, he wants to proceed and get a ruling from the ZBA, but it does, it does obviate our specific issues, and there will be a deed restriction filed enforceable by the city. It's my understanding also of Mr. Wise, I think, has been in here, that the city will move towards a moratorium on this type of activity and giving the council opportunity to take a look at it, but we're not suggesting that this obviates the necessity of this hearing. We're just saying that's our position, that's agreement we have with, with, with Mr. Fluger. So, Mr. Wardlaw will be proceeding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Choate.
Guy, and that's done regardless of what happens after this point?
That's my understanding, and, you know, Mr. Fluger and Mr. Allen are here.
Okay. Mr. Wardlaw, would you approach the podium?
Yes, sir. I have an hour and a half minus, is that correct? I won't take it all.
Yes, sir.
All right. For the record, again, my name is H.R. Wardlaw III. I live in San Angelo. Been a resident of San Angelo since 1946. I'm here representing myself, but I also feel like I'm here representing this entire community and all these people in this room, and all these people upstairs that are packed up there. And my purpose here today is to try to reverse the ruling of the city planning director, which is, in our opinion, is totally incorrect and totally against the law and the zoning ordinances. We have furnished you with all this stuff in our pre-filing. Does everybody here, did they bring a copy with them of Sections 305 and 416? If they don't have one, I'll be happy to furnish you one. You got yours, Lewis?
I think so.
To save me from looking through a large stack.
I've got a bunch.
I'll take a copy. Does any other board member need a copy?
It should be in your packet of materials. It should be tabbed also, so it shouldn't be too hard to find if you.
I know it. I'd read one this weekend, and I'd look at it, and I'd be ready to read that one. It's a new one.
Which packets are in?
It's in a couple of different packets. You've got.
Is it in the folder?
Do you have an issue with this one because the 400 series you've got here?
Do you have it? Yes.
It actually got numbered in April.
Okay.
It would be numbered in April 15 or 15th meeting.
I have a copy after all.
You saw this one?
Yes, sir, it is. So, there it is.
Okay, gotcha. That's what I thought. We're willing.
I think it's page one, Lewis.
I think it's page one. It's been over on the first page and second page. First page.
As you may recall, we filed our appeal several months ago, and at that time, we clearly set out in our appeal where we felt that the planning director had made an error, and we clearly set that out in the appeal, and I hope you guys have read this in recent times, but in any event, we pointed out that under Sections 305, that silica frac sand operations would be heavy manufacturing and not light manufacturing, because if you look at the ordinance, Section 305, see, you'll say, you see that it discusses a type of operation that has got a high degree of nuisance and a high degree of adverse impact. Of course, our position is, and we'll have some videos here in a minute, it is clearly one of the highest degrees of adverse impact any, any business could, could be involved in. Number one, it operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it's got all the heavy equipment going and coming. It's got dust and frac sand going everywhere, and it just can't be, it can't be in light manufacturing, and you cannot, you cannot ignore Section 305. And then, 416 has a list of about six things that you cannot have in, in light manufacturing, and it's the noise and all these other questions that we ask, and it was obvious that the planning department did not even consider those six sections. But here's the important thing I want you to take away from this. The lawyers know that Sections 305 and 416 are tailored from state law. They were, these, these ordinance sections were not just, they were not drafted or brought into play just out of a clear blue sky. Under Texas law, and I'll quickly read it to you, let me give you the definition of nuisance while we're discussing these. Nuisance under Texas law is a condition that substantially interferes with the use and enjoyment of land caused by, causing unreasonable discomfort or annoyance to persons of ordinary sensibilities attempting to use or enjoy it, referring to the land. That's the definition of a nuisance. Cases say a nuisance is actionable because it is, because conduct is abnormal and out of place in its surroundings. Well, a silica frac sand operation is clearly abnormal and out of place in its surroundings, just like all the other cases that talk about rock crushing plants and cotton gins and the like. The cases are legion. Now, let's look at the Texas definition case law of low degree of nuisance under Texas law. Slight or trifling inconveniences merely displeasing or unsightly. If your house is across the street from a silica frac sand operation, how could you contend that it's displeasing or unsightly merely? And the reason the ordinances were drafted this way is because you do not want to have somebody putting stuff in light manufacturing like they're doing here, where it's got a high degree of nuisance, because Texas law is not going to allow that. If you, there's no use in having an ordinance if it's, if it's going to be overruled by Texas case law, and so, you know, when the city planning department chooses to just ignore these two statutes, and one other I'm going to mention to you in just a minute, you reach the absurd result that when silica frac sand dust, which is hazardous under federal law, and it's, I think it's Section 29 Code of Federal Regulations 1900, and we've given you the doctor's report and everything, they're saying it doesn't make any difference. You just ignore Sections 305 and 416. That, and you reach, when you ignore statutes that are placed there for a certain intended purpose, that's how you get to the absurd result, that they're asking you to rule that this, this is, this is not a problem. Well, you know, we've got all 29 businesses in the immediate area have filed a petition, which, signed a petition objecting to this and objecting to what it will do to their, their businesses, and we'll file that here in just a minute. We've got about 1,500 citizens that have signed an online petition against this, and so, you know, if, if the planning director's erroneous decision is upheld, then those people are going to suffer a nuisance, and they're going to suffer damages to their property, and they know it, and they're going to come up here and testify about that here in a minute. So, you just can't selectively use these ordinances, and, or Mr. Howard has gone wrong. He's ignoring one and, and then saying, well, it goes in warehouse and freight. Well, let me just point out to you another thing, and Mr. Howard and I have talked about this, there, these ordinances were drafted last about 2007, and there was no silica frac sand operations in West Texas or in San Angelo. They were not known. So, you know, you can try to find a little cubby hole to park it over here in one of these sections where the drafters never, never even knew about it because it didn't exist, and then ignore the others, and then that's how you come up with the result where you wake up, you members of the board can wake up sometime, and if your, if your house is next to a light manufacturing classification, you know, you may have your property totally covered in dust. And let me, let me read one last thing to, to, to be an example and demonstrate the absurdity of this type of strange construction of statutes. Air pollution in Texas. Every person has the right to have air, the air diffused over his or her premises, whether located in city or country, in its natural state, free from impurities. That's a City of Temple versus Mitchell, 180 Southwest Second, 959. And so, you get a frac sand operation next to your residence like Barnhart, well, all of those properties, their yards, their cars, their tables, their chairs on the inside, they're all covered by silica frac sand and/or coalitie dust, and they've destroyed the town. The town of Barnhart has gone from 199 registered voters in the last two years to 99, 199 to 99. They are losing their voting box in Barnhart because there are not enough registered voters left there anymore to, to vote, to classify, to qualify for a voting box. So, this, you just cannot reach the right result without looking at. whether located in city or country, in its natural state, free from impurities." That's a City of Temple versus Mitchell, 180 Southwest Second, 959. And so, you get a frac sand operation next to your residence like Barnhart. All of those properties, their yards, their cars, their tables, their chairs on the inside, they're all covered by silica frac sand and/or coalitie dust. And they've destroyed the town. The town of Barnhart has gone from 199 registered voters in the last two years to 99. 199 to 99. They are losing their voting box in Barnhart because there are not enough registered voters left there anymore to vote, to classify, to qualify for a voting box. So, you just cannot reach the right result without looking at 305 and 416. And now that I've finished on those, I want to point out the language in Section 316, which the planning department totally ignores to reach whatever result they intended to desire, apparently. If you look, this is 316. If you look over there at the category of warehouse and freight, it talks about, and I don't think, I think Mr., I may be wrong, but I think Mr. Howard quit reading this statute before he got to the part I'm going to read you. It says, "Goods are generally not displayed or sold on-site. But if so, they are supporting a part of overall sales. Relatively few customers come to the manufacturing site." Relatively few customers. Well, let me tell you about frac sand operations. The sand is transported down here by rail from Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, at those mines up there, and it comes down here to San Angelo to a transloading operation. And then at that point in time, the title to that transfers to whoever comes with their truck to pick the sand up and take it to a well location. And those trucks are working at the behest in order of companies like Slumber J, Halliburton, Baker Hughes, and about the 10 or 11 others that operate in the Permian Basin. And so, here you're saying relatively few customers come to the manufacturing site, or goods are generally not sold on-site. Well, out there at Hughes Street, there's about 90 customers a day show up. And then I gave you the stuff in the prefile packet showing, you know, 25 to 90 customers a day, and you multiply that by week and by month and by year, it's as much as 30,000 or 40,000 customers. And they either don't understand how the frac sand business works and how the title to the sand operates, or they just totally choose to ignore this language. And I don't know which it is, but that's another reason it points out that this is all wrong. And that's what leads to the absurd result of having a frac sand operation right next to your front door. And that's what we're facing. Every single member of the city council, all seven of them, including our honorable mayor, are against this operation. They're totally opposed to it. They believe that it would be an absolute unqualified disaster for this city to have a cloud of dust hanging over the city and the downtown area 365 days a year. And I watched the Super Bowl last night, and the mayor was on, interviewed after the Super Bowl, and he pointed out that the city council, and he are not only totally against this, but they are hoping and praying and relying on the ZBA to correct this mistake. And if it doesn't get corrected here, then Mr. Choate and his group have done yeoman's work having to do with this one particular piece of property over there on Hill Street, but there are a myriad of other light manufacturing properties all over the city. And those properties, if you don't reverse this decision, are going to be subject to having a frac sand operation coming to the place near you. And it's just, even people in the oil business that I know well, and I am in the oil business, they say it's insane to put one of these in a city because when you are running a big-time frac operation, transloading, you're moving between 2 to 4 million pounds of frac sand per day. 2 to 4 million pounds per day. And you cannot move around 2 to 4 million pounds of frac sand per day without having to slosh everywhere, go everywhere. And that's what we're going to show you in the video. If you'll look over there, just look at these pictures right here. The one on the right-hand side, look at all the frac sand falling off the side of that truck due to a malfunction in the equipment. And believe me, that happens all the time, not just, this is not a one-time thing. If you look at the middle picture there, you see a transport truck being loaded in one escape hatch at the top, and the silica sand dust coming out of the second hole next to it being forced up into the air. And that goes up about 30 feet in the air, and then the wind carries it wherever it goes. And, you know, for example, coming to this conclusion that they did about the Hill Street and the zoning, it has on four sides of it, very close, a whole bunch of children's operations. House of Faith, I mean, right up, almost adjoining this. Kids Kingdom, Fort Concho Elementary, the municipal swimming pool at Santa Rita. And yet, they are construing the zoning ordinance in the city of San Angelo not to protect these children or the people living there or the businesses? And while I'm at it, and the third picture over there is, when you see all that sand falling out onto the ground, it's no longer usable for fracking a well because it's got other materials in there. And so, what they have to do, and they keep two front-end loaders over there. See the one on the left with the circle around it? They come in after that truck leaves, and then they go pick that sand up, and you can see it falling out. And we'll show you on the video that the sand is falling all over. And they take it and they haul it from where it fell all the way across the property, and they stack it up there, and then they haul it off the property to somewhere else that we don't know yet, but it's probably up there on North Bell Street. And then you see these pictures down here below, which are part of the video, that we want to introduce into evidence here in a minute. But those bright lights, the plume thing coming up there that looks like a light, that is silica frac sand dust coming out of one transport truck being loaded at night. And that's the plume of dust that comes out that you would have to breathe if you were a child over there trying to be at the House of Faith or Fort Concho Elementary. And I just don't think anybody wants that. So, anyway, I'd like to run our videos. They're all just a couple of minutes apiece, and then introduce them into evidence. And I'll be close to being through. And I'll narrate just barely.
Proposed sand transloading facility in San Angelo is attracting the attention of nearby residents who say they're worried about air pollution.
The zoning ordinance is written, "Transloading operations are allowed in light manufacturing." And essentially, the materials that he'll be transloading, which is sand, is free of any hazardous material. Essentially, the materials that he'll be transloading, which is sand, is free of any hazardous material.
That statement is one of the most incorrect statements I've heard in a long time, but let's move forward. This next will be the Hughes Street facility. San Angelo, Texas. You can see the silica frac sand dust going up in there, 30 feet high there.
Silica.
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 See, they've got three ports on the top of this truck to open. It's going to contain, back down all three ports. Obviously, there's no way to go in and out of it. This is not police, you guys. This is silica frac sand, bro. Having some bad north winds tonight here, blowing it back toward town. Picture's worth a thousand words. I've kind of lost count, but there are about seven or eight different ways silica frac sand dust and silica frac sand escape the loading process. After the trucks load, they leave their tops open, and they drive around to another part of the property. During that time, they lose the frac sand dust. What you have here is a transport truck in between those two lines of railcars loading. And you see the frac sand dust shining in the light. This is looking west, this is Santa Rita area, west from the frac sand loading site proposed. Former proposed frac loading site. We hope. Santa Rita Elementary School. At this time, Mr. Chairman, we offer or tender into evidence this video just shown and these five pictures right there, please, sir.
I'll accept that as evidence. Is there any disagreement from the board?
That's the long one. These others will be much shorter.
Everybody's quit looking for you, or they've turned your phone off.
This is a nighttime video shot at Hughes Street. Looking north from Hughes.
Mr. Wille, about what time of night is it? Did you have any idea?
Yes. 10:30, Mr. Adams. For some reason, there seems to be a lot of activity at night, but I haven't been able to get anybody to explain to me why that is. Here in just a second, I'll ask you to focus your attention on this loader that finishes uploading and watch the top of this loader after the truck pulls off. Notice all of the frac sand coming out of this loader is being moved right now. We offer this particular video into evidence, Mr. Chairman.
Does any board member have any objection to this? Okay.
Yeah. This is another video of Hughes Street, taken just before dark in probably December. And you'll notice, as I said, right around dark, activity seems to pick up. There are about 30 trucks you're seeing in the video at this time, all together loaded. This is a motherload.
Yeah, I think so.
I wish we had. Not all with dust. Is there anything light about this particular operation that anybody can discern? I'll just say this, with respect to this video and the ones we've seen so far. Oh, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer this into evidence at this time.
I'll admit it. Is there any objection from the board? Okay.
As an attorney, I can tell you that under Texas law, an operation like this would not be permitted next to your house or your front door because it violates our common law nuisance. And so why, if it's not allowable under Texas law, why would we construe our own zoning ordinance statutes to allow this? It makes no sense.
Proposed sand translating facility in San Angelo is attracting the attention of nearby residents who say they're worried about air pollution. News Connection Stephanie Garland reports.
From his front yard off Hill Street and West Avenue H, resident Jesse Martinez can see where land is being cleared for a new sand transportation facility. He's lived on that street for at least 40 years, and his eight-year-old parents live next door. Martinez's main concern is the sand will pollute the air.
We have a very modest neighborhood. You know, we don't have brick homes many to speak of, or two-story, or pools in our backyard, but we're very proud of it. And we feel that this sand, as it blows here, may deteriorate and damage our homes and our vegetations, etc.
The five-and-a-half acre plot of land is on Hill Street, next to the rail line, between the Concha Valley Regional Food Bank and Guardian Building Products. It's already zoned for light manufacturing.
Because of the way the zoning ordinance is written, transloading operations are allowed in light manufacturing. And essentially, the materials that he'll be transloading, which is sand, is free of any hazardous material. So based on that, I mean, he is going to be allowed to conduct those operations.
City officials say sand transportation facilities are in the light manufacturing category. As are packaging and construction companies. The only other facility of its kind, operating within the city limits, is in northeast San Angelo, on Hughes Street, in an industrial park zoned as heavy manufacturing, with no residential homes nearby.
Howard says the proposed facility should look similar to the only other one in San Angelo, Pinnacle Sands.
At their October 21 meeting, council members will consider altering the city zoning categories so that another sand facility could not be established near residential neighborhoods. Hill Street is in Councilman Johnny Silva's district. He says he's interested in learning more about the city zoning laws.
I would certainly want to get more details about it, on the ideas of the different changes.
At that same meeting, Martinez will be asking council members to request an air quality study from Texas Commission on Environmental Quality.
What we're asking the council is to call for the Environmental Protection Agency to conduct a study of air quality control. There are some standards that need to be met. We don't want those standards to be violated.
As it stands, unless TCQ says the facility would greatly decrease the air quality, Silva says there is nothing council can do to stop it. For Concha Valley homepage news connection, I'm Stephanie Garland.
At that translating facility, the sand will be brought in by rail and then would be offloaded onto 18-wheeler trucks for transport where it's needed.
Oh, dear.
Tell me what the community was like five years ago.
Oh, well, we were a pristine little community.
Talk a little bit louder because we've got a machine running next to us.
We were a very lovely little community of local citizens.
You know, you just breathe this stuff in and you just, you know that it's not good for you. But it keeps me awake a lot because I hear everything.
Well, we have a business sitting down there on the road right across the highway from them that we're having to move out because of frac sand.
Tell me about the business.
It's the ice machine, the self-service ice machine. The sand has literally ate up the mechanism and gearboxes in it. You can pull the front cover off of a sealed ice machine and find sand inside the water trays.
But that has changed dramatically. A lot of the old timers sold out and left due to the increase in traffic. And a lot of them sold out and left from the frac sand stuff, or having breathing difficulties.
I just think it was a bad place to put it in the first place.
It's just a totally different community now than it was when we came.
I would imagine, at that time, there was about 110, 115 people.
Bet you knew every one of them.
Yes, grew up with them.
How many locals, as you refer, are here now?
I wish I knew. There's probably less than 50. Because the doctors told me two years ago to get out of it, out of the sand because of my lung and heart condition. We liked our little town the way it was. And of course, that's gone forever now. And golly, it's just awful.
Well, if you like to clean house every day, you definitely want to vote for it if that's your favorite thing to do, because every day you can write your name on all your furniture. And it's just, it's impossible to keep it out.
But we have to leave because of the sand and causing me lung problems and everything else. And it's just, it's just come to the point we have to move now.
Man, probably over a thousand.
Over a thousand trucks.
One day down here on County Route 131, we clocked on at over 150 per hour.
And it's just hard to keep cleaning.
It just turns awful and, you know, greed rares its ugly head, let's say. It turns neighbor against neighbor.
I have seen a lot of sand that has collected around the community building, you know, where the grass is. The mowing is just really hard to do.
This particular doctor also was over in Brady, and he said since he's been going over there taking care of patients, he has seen a sharp increase in lung problems because of the sand over in Brady.
You know, everybody was happy.
The train. And so it's going to wake you up if you, and I wear earplugs sometimes even, just to, but I lie awake at night and count trucks on the highway here. And there's lots of trucks going and coming out of the sand plant.
Um, instead of counting sheep, you count trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
Hauling it out of here. The train, they put, what, six or eight more spurs in here?
Yeah, six, I think.
For...
For trains.
For the trains to unload. And now they're going in Lord's App, I understand.
We've all developed a little cough or, you know, it's hard to breathe sometimes.
I would tell them fight it tooth and toenail, because it's not, it's not good. There's times I stop here at this intersection and it takes 45 minutes or more to cross the railroad track.
I would say, don't let them in. Now, at my house, across the street, we've got my flower beds and trees around there. They're just, you know, sand. Nothing but sand. And I've noticed that our trees and our flowers and our gardens this year, this summer seems like it just, they haven't, you know, really perked up and thrived like they usually do.
Well, for one thing, like I said, you just can't go outside just anytime you want. You have to make sure the wind's not blowing the wrong way, the dirt's not in the air. And you just clean more.
Now, the traffic is horrible. The, we have had trucks stop, pull up in front of the fire station, and we've got signs on the doors not to block the access. And they, you know, we have to go out there and tell them to move. There is trucks just going up and down, or just trying to park everywhere. And on 67, in the mornings or afternoons or whenever you come through, there's always trucks lined up along the highway, just parked. And they're sand trucks.
Well, if you can get sand in an ice machine that's sealed, with sealed doors on it, screwed down, it's going anywhere it wants. I don't know how it gets in there, but it...
And then you open the inside. And you can see, this is the ice container here. And it gets in here, gets all in there. And up in there is our, the ice maker is actually up in that sealed unit. And that's all sealed. And when we take that cover off, we found sand inside the ice maker in there. You can see, look at that. That's why we're moving it. And this is all a computer in there. And I can open this. I don't have my screwdriver.
That's okay.
Inside that computer, there's sand. And this is, as you can see, is sealed.
And you cleaned all of this this morning, so?
I blew all this off this morning, and it's right back.
So it's about six hours later?
About six hours.
Wow.
And I don't know who, where, how all this sand processing started or who gave them the land to put this on, but they did not think it out. It's a horrible traffic intersection. It's a horrible wreck, just waiting to happen.
And what scares me is there's two crossings of the railroad in Barnhart from the south. And most instances, both of them will be blocked by train. And it's frightening to know that crooked...
And it's frightening to know that crooked...
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer into evidence a letter of Dr. John Harvey that was in our second pre-filing, but I don't think you might have got, I don't know if you got a copy of it. So I'd like to offer this into evidence and pass that out to...
No, we don't have copies for the board.
Oh, you did?
I said, we don't have copies?
I'm afraid you might not have any.
We can share it down here. Mr. Wardlaw, do you want to read this out loud so everybody can hear it?
Uh, yes, you want to do that or you want me to?
I'll let you do it. Have more impact that way.
Who knows? Uh, this is a letter dated January 16, 2015, being read into the record. Dear Eva, Guy, and Jean, here is some information on risk, health risk to humans from exposure to silica sand. NIOSH considers silica, crystalline silica to be potential occupational carcinogen as defined by the OSHA carcinogen policy, section 29 CFR 1990, which is the one I quoted earlier. Silicosis is caused by regularly inhaling the crystalline silica dust, also known as respiratory crystalline silica, RCS. The dust enters the lung tissue and causes the formation of scar tissue, which comprises the ability of lung tissue to exchange oxygen molecules efficiently. The American Thoracic Society published a paper entitled "Adverse Effects on Crystalline Silica Exposure" in 1996. Although the information is dated, it is still relevant. The paper highlights silicosis and how silicosis increases the risk of TB infections, chronic bronchitis, and lung cancer. It is also briefly discussed how silica particles have been found in brain and kidney tissue. In addition, silicotic nodules have been found in the liver, spleen, bone marrow, and regional lymph nodes without evidence of lung disease. There's also a potential association with long-term exposure to silica and autoimmune diseases such as scleroderma, rheumatoid arthritis, and systemic lupus. In 2012, OSHA published a hazard alert, which we furnished you, discussing worker exposure to silica during hydraulic fracturing. It has excellent pictures of all the dust that results from the transferring, the silica sand to trucks. It has a simple but detailed explanation of the health risk associated with exposure to silica, as well as a description of the safety equipment that workers should use to prevent exposure to the dust. Here's a link to the article, and then there's several other links. And then further down at the bottom, and last but not least, locating a silica sand transfer station in a residential area near public schools and youth facilities increases the exposure of silica dust to a vulnerable population of the city. Chronic exposure to wind-blown silica dust increases the potential risk for long-term health problems. Kindly regards, John Harvey, M.D. And so I would like to offer this letter into evidence.
I'll receive it. Does any board member have any objection to that? Okay.
Okay, just a few more things, and I hope to wind up. A couple of informational things for the board. In drilling a, in drilling a horizontal well, it takes over 100 transport trucks to frac one well. So when you put in a frac sand operation, one well is going to generate 100 trucks. So that's why you see all that activity out there, all hours of the day and night.
Mr. Wardlaw, where'd you get that information from that it's going to take 100 trucks to frac one well?
My partner in the oil business.
Is he here?
No, sir.
Okay.
But that's commonly known in the industry.
Okay, I don't know that, but...
Well...
It seems like a lot, but...
No, sir, it's absolutely not. It obviously depends on the length of the lateral line, how far out it goes, whether it's a mile, two miles, and how many stages of frac they put on it.
Okay.
But 100 is not uncommon. I want to talk to you about trucks and truck traffic a little bit. We've been focusing here on frac sand flying around at these facilities and the silica sand dust, but also another serious problem, of course, the noise and the fumes and the vibrations, is the traffic caused by one of these plants. These trucks are 60 feet long, and their turning radius is such that it takes about, on a right turn, it takes about two and a half lanes of traffic for it to make a turn. And so when the truck comes to an intersection and makes a right turn, it has to either do one of two things. It has to look to the right and see if there's any, well, if it's not a four-lane road, you've got a lot of problems. But even if it's a four-lane road, they've got to look and see and make sure that there's no traffic coming from the opposite direction where they're turning because they have to use those turn lanes over in the other side of the road. And we, you can see this from sitting out there at Hughes Street and see these trucks turn. And interestingly enough, when a truck gets ready to turn to the right and it sees traffic coming, then it has to cut sharply. And if you go out there and look, and I'm going to show you some pictures here, and I'm going to introduce these into evidence, but look, look how much it has to cut the intersection just to, just to keep from having a hit on with oncoming traffic.
You start down there with Mr. Adams.
You'll see from this picture how, and this is over there, this is on Bell Street where it intersects with Hughes Street, and it's down a little ways from Producer's Livestock Auction, of course, but you can see how far this thing has to get up on the curb to make, just make a turn. And that is extremely dangerous. And I have pictures here on the other side of the intersection showing the same thing, but it's kind of, it's kind of repetitious, so I'm not going to introduce that one into evidence. And of course, these trucks weigh about 85,000 pounds fully loaded with frac sand, and they tear up the highways, the roads, and everything. And I don't even know how you could have one of these, it may be moot now, it, Hill Street, but Hill Street was a two-lane road. So coming out, coming off the property and making a turn, it'd just be, and if it's some other place in town, it would be just as, just as terrible, just as tragic.
Mr. Wardlaw?
Yes.
You have about 30 minutes left. Would it mess you up if we took a 10-minute break and then got back to you?
Good idea. And I'll finish up soon.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll take a 10-minute break. Okay, Mr. Wardlaw?
Okay, I'll hurry along, about finished.
Got about 30 minutes left, I think.
I'll give you some time back. Couple of housekeeping items I would like to introduce into evidence if I didn't before those last two videos that were played, please, sir, and offer them into evidence. And also, we talked about it earlier, and I think you may have a copy in the prefiled stuff that we put in, but I'd like to introduce into evidence the actual original business petition against the frac sand operation, please, sir.
Okay.
Sir, you have that in your package?
Yeah, it's in there. Okay.
I can't remember now which one has, I can't remember any.
One other point I'd like to bring out before I get to my last point, and that is, you probably know this, but these frac sand trucks don't just go directly from the well site to the transloading facility. They hold all over town, and you've seen them. They hold in, you know, areas around, and you see two or three or four trucks parked there. They're all around town, and they're in the neighborhood, and so if you have a frac sand operation, you're going to be having trucks holding in the neighborhood, and they wait there until they get ready to go load. And so, you know, if you see 12 or 15 trucks loading at one time, if you drive around the area, you'll see a number of trucks holding at various places where they're allowed to park or something. But anyway, I have just four videos of these holding places for trucks and showing the deposition of frac sand around. One's at Pulliam Street across from the Dunbar East Motel, another one at Stripes and Bell, well, Bell at Houston Heart on Stripes, another one across Hughes Street, Pinnacle Sands, and then here's another holding area at Main and Houston Heart. And they're four photos that have not been prefiled, and I'd like to offer them at this time into evidence, please. Were those accepted yet?
Yes, there's no objections in the board. They need to look at them, I guess. Any objections? Okay.
Lastly, I would like to talk to the board about section 416 in the zoning ordinance having to do with manufacturing and production. And you have a copy of 416, and I'd like for you to access it. It's with 305 on the bottom part of the zoning ordinance that I furnished earlier that you had. If anybody can't find theirs, I've got a couple extra.
I think we're ready.
Okay. You will recall on our cross-examination by written question, we asked Mr. Patrick Howard whether or not, what work he had done with respect to section 416 and what consideration. And he answered all of those. He had, he had not done any investigation to determine whether or not any of these six sections, subsections under 416 were being played by Mr. Fluger's frac sand operation. And let me just go over those briefly with you, please. And I think it's pertinent to do this after we've looked at these videos and see, and have a graphic description and demonstration of what goes on in these facilities. But 416 has also been shunned off to the side and thrown in the trash by the planning department, unfortunately. And let me, let me read to you what it says if you follow along there with me. "The following general performance standards, performance standards shall apply to activity allowed in light manufacturing districts." Those are standards. Those have to be, you can't ignore 416. You can't just say, "Well, I found something over here in 316, so I'm going..." These are requirements. Performance standards are, to me, are like requirements in the English language. And if they can't meet these six performance standards, then it ain't heavy manufact, it ain't light manufacturing, excuse me. And let's just go over those quickly. "In light of the videos we've just watched, no vibration at any point beyond the lot line." You be the judge. "All noise should be muffled so as not to be objectionable." I don't think so. "Visible emissions of air pollutants, blah, blah, blah." Visible emissions of air pollutants are everywhere in those videos. "No person shall," and number four, "No person shall allow particulate matter to become airborne." My goodness. It is not possible to keep that material from being airborne in a silica frac sand operation. It is not possible under any scenario. And you've seen the loading process and how it works, and it's important for this board to remember that in West Texas, in what we've seen, all of these frac sand operations are basically the same, and I hope I'm not repeating myself. But the reason they're essentially the same is, number one, they're getting their silica frac sand from the very train that comes through St. Angelo and goes to Barnhart and out west. So it all comes on the same train. Number two, the trucks that pick this frac sand up at the location, at the frac sand location, loading location, those are the same trucks, and they just rotate between all of the frac sand operation. They may go to one one day and one the next, but they use, they use all of the same loading facilities just from time to time, depending on where the well that they're servicing is being drilled. And so, and the trucks are all basically designed the same, where the sand flows from the loader into those hatches at the top, and there's usually three, occasionally I've seen four, and it goes down in there. And you just, it just causes sand and dust to go everywhere. And then the third reason that they're essentially the same is, the loaders that I've seen in all these are exactly the same, same loaders. And they, they load from the top, and it's just not, it's just not a sealed operation. And when you're putting 45,000, think about this, when you're putting 45,000 pounds of sand, frac sand, in a container, it's going to, when that stuff comes down, 45,000 pounds, it's going to blow out sand, dust, air, and everything. And that's why, when you see those in the videos, it was blowing that stuff back out of there because there's so much sand going in there and it has so much weight. And going back to 416, "No emissions or transmission of heat so as to be discernible from the lot line." Thirty, 30 diesel trucks all idling at one time right there on the edge of the property. I don't think so. And the last, number six, talks about odors. Diesel trucks, as we all know, make odors, and I think they're discernible, but that's, I guess, a matter of dispute and debate. And, you know, you can make your own judgment about that. But to protect, 416 and these six performance standards were put in here to protect the citizens of this town. And if we don't adhere to those, then we end up with a situation like Barnhart where everybody's going to have to leave their home and go somewhere else. And, you know, you just can't say that a frac sand operation that's across the street from your house, you folks would not allow one there if you had anything to say about it. But even more than that, you know, of your own knowledge, that this kind of adverse impact on property is going to cause a diminution in the market value of these properties, obviously, and it's going, it's going to make them entirely very difficult to market the property because no one's going to want to live next to one of these. So I think that's all I have right now, and thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Would the opposing party in interest like to present in writing any questions they would like me as chair to ask the witness?
Thank you. I have three. The writing given, my penmanship is on my computer screen. And if they deem that appropriate, I would like to just hand that over to you.
Okay. Mr. Wardlaw, you got, willing to answer a few questions?
Yes, sir.
Are there any objections to any of these questions by the board? Okay. What zoning classification applies to the property depicted in your videos today?
That's a broad global question. The Hughes Street is heavy manufacturing. Is that, was that the question?
The question was what zoning classification applies to the property depicted in your videos today? I'm assuming Barnhart's not zoned.
Right. Barnhart, no zoning, and Hughes, heavy manufacturing.
Okay. On how many different occasions did you take video of the San Angelo property depicted during your presentation today?
Did I personally? Zero, but I had other people to do it for me.
How many different occasions do you think it took to make those videos?
Not very many, just five or 10. I've been out there 50 times or more myself.
Do you think it would have been possible to take all of those in one day?
Probably not, no. Every day's a different day out there because those frac sand operations are a function of how many wells are being drilled in the area at the time. Sometimes there's a lot of activity, sometimes early in the morning, there's none.
Did you take video of any other transloading facility in San Angelo such as the EOG facility in town?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Wardlaw?
Where is the EOG facility?
I'm not familiar with it unless it's that one up on North Bell Street. I don't know the name of it. There's one up there. I'm not sure it's a true frac sand plant, but I don't, I really don't think it is, but, you know, I've been wrong before.
Did that come through the planning department? I mean.
Off the top of my head, sir, I'm not familiar with the EOG facility.
Chalk Mountain.
Not recently, sir.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wardlaw.
Mr. Wardlaw, is there any, did you know about the EOG facility? Are you familiar with it at all?
Yes, sir. I've been by there a number of times. I think it's referred to as the Chalk Mountain. So when they said EOG, I didn't know what they were referring to. Yes, sir, I've probably been by it 10 times.
And you say you don't believe it's an actual sand, sand type business?
I'm not exactly saying that, but I think they have, I think there are other types of operations out there rather than just a pure frac sand. I don't, I don't, as I view it without talking to any of them, I don't think it's a pure frac sand facility.
Okay. Okay. And you say that based on, you don't think it's pure, I guess, I guess I can ask this question of Mr. Fluger. Is it a pure SACFRAN facility? The Chalk Mountain facility or the EOG?
It's a transloading facility.
It's the exact same?
Well, they operate differently, but it transloads frac sand primarily to EOG.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wardlaw. Okay. The applicant Lee Fluger, represented by Sam Allen Esquire, shall now be allowed to speak for up to one and a half hours. Can you do about 45 minutes worth and then let us take a lunch break?
For dinner?
A dinner break, whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
And then come back to it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. First order of business would be for me to distribute additional materials that we would like for you to consider. They're in packets that I'll pass out. I have a copy for counsel and I've provided Mr. Choate and Mr. Hargrove with these documents already. If I may.
Yes, sir.
I present to you the following documents. The first page is what I have put together under the title Terms of Agreement. It outlines four points that outline the agreement that has been put in place between Southwest Orient and Mr. Fluger, on the one hand, and the four appellantents represented by Mr. Choate. And the terms of that agreement are that they will withdraw from the appeal and return Mr. Fluger and the company he owns, or any company he controls, agrees that they won't transload, and the phrase we negotiated was frac sand or frac proppants, P-R-O-P-P-A-N-T-S. That hasn't made its way into the dictionary, but the agreement of the parties is that's a reference in the industry to any material or product that's pumped into the ground during the fracking process in order to maintain the fractures. In addition, Mr. Fluger and Southwest Orient Properties agree that any future enactments of the city regarding light manufacturing zoning will apply to this property and to any other property that he or Southwest Orient owns within the city limits. I may have glossed over that. The terms are there for you to see, but those are the points that I want to emphasize to you in presenting that item. For the purposes of assuring you that this is the agreement of the four appellantents represented by Mr. Choate, I'd like to ask him if I have presented that accurately.
What's represented there is that the thrust of which is there won't be a sand management planted at Hill Street facility. That is correct. That is our right.
Also included in the packet is a deed restriction bearing the language identical to the agreement of the parties and bearing a legal description that describes the property, which is the subject of this zoning. The original is here today. It was signed on Sunday and it will be filed promptly after this hearing as per our agreement. This agreement was negotiated after business hours, so we don't have it filed yet, but you'll hear Mr. Fluger confirm that. Behind that is a plat of the property. We do not intend to file that of record because it's not essential, but it backs up the legal description. In addition, there is an article from yesterday's San Angelo Standard Times that Mr. Fluger will reply to during his presentation. And then copies of additional slides that were not included in the materials which I provided on Friday, just so you'll have them for future reference if they are of interest to you. And so, Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Choate will have copies of those today. And so those are our additional submissions in hard copy form today. And Mr. Fluger will make a presentation to the board, which will contain slides equivalent to what you have now been provided. And then I'll ask to come back to tell you what I think the evidence means. At that juncture, of course, at the chair's directive, we are all subject to additional written questions. Have I been clear about that? I want to make sure you'll understand what I've presented.
Yeah, yes, I think.
Excuse me. Yes, I think we may have actually had a misreading or an error. The other appellant's name is Mr. Wardlaw, not Mr. Hargrove, correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Yes, wanted to make sure the record was clear.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. I believe at this time, I would ask that those be admitted into the record along with the other evidentiary matters.
Any objections from the board members? None from me.
Very well. I will ask Mr. Fluger to come forward and give his presentation to the board.
Thank you very much for hearing me today. I am Lee Fluger. I am the managing owner of Southwest Orient Properties LLC. That's the owner of the property that you see right here. Now, you, obviously, you've already heard the good news that there will never be a sand fracking, transloading facility located on the property at Hill Street. I've been engaged for the last month, working with the city council and the appellant's to document a decision I made during Christmas to remove our community's frac sand fears. And that's the big issue for our community, I think, today. Well, there's several of them, but there's a fear in town that's been generated through this whole process that is just not what we need in San Angelo, Texas. And that was the primary reason that I made this, I did this action. We've made a lot of progress, and as you see in your documents, but I'm here today, I'm still defending my property rights related to the property. Talk is cheap, but I backed up my commitment and what I've said with the document you have there that permanently restricts frac sand transloading activities on Hill Street. And that, what that means, I think you asked it early, that when lose or draw today, there will never be a transloading facility on Hill Street. And now, your challenge is first of all, to obtain a thorough understanding of San Angelo's current zoning ordinance. I realize it is very difficult to understand, and it's antiquated, but you need to thoroughly understand what it actually says today. And then to apply that ordinance as defective as it may be, as it pertains to transloading sand in our community, or for that, into our community. At this point, I have to opine just a little bit, because as I mentioned before, private property rights are important to the business entrepreneur. And the right to decide what you're going to do with your property has to be the sole choice of the property owner. In this particular case, it's my right to decide if I want to, whether I want to or not restrict my property from, to being used for sand transloading. But restrictions that are forced on me by public opinion and private party litigation are violations of my basic rights. Now, the presentation that I'm about to show you is going to depict a sand loading facility. But again, I repeat, I am not ever going to put a transloading frac sand facility on Hill Street. But the appeal that you have before you today, I know we've heard a whole lot about Pinnacle and Barnhart, but what we have before us today concerns a zoning interpretation. And that was based, that was based on a frac sand facility. This is what was approved, and that is what the city staff based their opinion on. I can't change those facts. The city's interpretation of the current zoning, I think, is correct. So this presentation I'm going to do today must cover the facts that was considered for that decision. That's what y'all have been working with today. Again, even if you affirm their decision, you affirm the staff's decision without modification, I'm not going to transload frac sand on that land, Hill Street. I have made, I have made that agreement with my friends, with my neighbors, and with my fellow citizens, and I will honor that agreement to the very letter. So with that clarification, I'd like to present, one, to share with you details about sand transloading processes, and then point out how the use of innovative design, state-of-the-art technology can virtually eliminate the impact of transloading facilities or activities on adjacent properties. And I want to start by sharing the highlights of my October 21st frac sand transloading presentation to the city council, combined with some expanded operational information and perspectives on some of the issues that have been brought up during this process today. So if I could, I will go to the exhibit. It's a great technical advisor. I don't have a pretty assistant. All right. This is, this is the deed restriction. You have a copy of it that's in your, in your packet that we just gave you. For the, for the audience who haven't seen it, the primary thing is the part that is in bold there. It says, "The restricted property," which is defined as Exhibit A, which is the property on Hill Street, "shall not be used for the transloading of silica frac sand or frac proppants." Now, in my presentation today, I'm going to talk about frac sand because I can't pronounce the last one that well, so. You've got the background, you know where the property is. I imagine most of you have been back and forth there over the last couple of three months. It was basically the old rail yard from, until 1960, and it's got 4,000 feet of rail adjacent to this property. It's landlocked, except for a little strip, 330 feet long that goes out to Hill Street. And it's bordered on all sides by old warehouses, and these are just views of, and you can see in every direction, and you've seen those, every direction, the only thing you see is the back of warehouses or storage areas. It's currently zoned, as we've It's currently zoned, as we've talked in every discussion, about multi-light manufacturing. And this is the property itself, is in the green, and you see that it's surrounded completely by light manufacturing zoned properties. Here are some of the products. When originally, I'm just doing my due diligence. When I got this land three years ago, first of all, I had to find it, and secondly, I started looking for things that I could do with it. So obviously, I didn't want, I really didn't want to know this much about the zoning law, personally. So I asked the staff to give me some ideas on what I could do, and what kind of zoning it had, and what I could do with it. So these are some of the items that we discussed at that time, oil and gas products, because when the trains come in, any product that comes into the oil and gas business mostly is pretty heavy. And so, if it can come in by train, the freight costs are a lot less. We're talking about pipe, drilling mud, chemicals, acids, power line poles, and sand. Of course, you realize we've taken sand off the table to be used over there. But these are the various products that could be transloaded off of the rail and to go to the oil and gas business. We talked about the sand. It's hard, it's round, it's all sized. When it leaves, when it leaves the mine, it's washed and it's dried. This talks about light manufacturing. I'm going to leave that to the experts. I'm just told that, and I do believe, that when I look at all the verbiage, the warehouse and freight movement is the proper class for this type of activity. It also includes, I believe, the transloading of grain. Of course, we know grain blows up in those silos, too, but it's kind of the same sort of product where you just bring a product in, and you transload it, and you put it on something else, it goes out. Again, this is more about the warehouse and freight as opposed to be manufacturing and production. We'll go through it later, but there's nothing produced on this. And I've made the comment before, it's very much like going to HEB and getting a stalker or someone to help you take your groceries out to the car, and it moves the groceries from your cart to your truck, to your car, your truck. And that's what a transloader does. He just moves somebody else's goods from the cart to the truck. And the, but he never owns it. And these transloaders, I'm a little confused with the analysis of Mr. Wardlow that says that every truck comes in there is a purchaser, because that's, all that this transloading operation does is transload somebody else's material to a truck. It's never owned by the transloader. So again, this, you know, it's enclosed rail cars. This, the conveyor, you saw somebody that ought to be fired on, out of those videos. The conveyor is kind of the key link between the enclosed rail car and the enclosed truck. This is a, one of the better conveyors. You notice that one was green that all these videos were done with, and Pinnacle has moved to this white conveyor, because I think they found that green one to be ineffective. You'd have to ask them about that, but I believe that's where it is. This conveyor has a dust collector on the back of it that catches the dust. The sand, when it leaves the mine, has been washed and sized, and then it runs on a rail for 1,000 miles, and it jiggles around, and that's what creates the dust. So there's a dust collector on this that picks up some of the fines that might have been in there, and then when it goes into the car, and you'll see another example of this, it's got a seal that goes over the top of the hole that's in the truck. And you'll see that there, as Mr. Wardlow mentioned, there are two to three holes on the top of the truck, they're little portholes, and that seal goes on the top of it and would seal the dust that would be generated inside the truck, except if they don't operate it right, and they leave the, and they leave the other holes open. And so, what properly should be done in terms of an operation is use some of these V-Socks. And you can just clamp those over the other two holes. It lets the air come out. They need, they need the release of the, when you're filling that truck up, you need release of the air inside. But in a first-class operation, they would have V-Socks over those other two holes to capture the small fines that you saw coming out of Mr. Wardlow's, a video that you saw over there. Again, that's all operational. It's, you're either first class, or you just happen to be in the class. The transloading process, as I said before, all this, they call it white northern sand. It's washed, well, it's mined, and it comes out pure, and it's a lot cleaner than the sand over at Brady. I'm told the sand at Brady was dirty, and they have to wash it a lot to get the fines out of it. In the north, it's clean sand, but they still have to wash it and size it and dry it before they put it into the trains. Now, we're talking about a very sophisticated system when you go to step two, and that is to, is to bring the, bring the sand into a sand transloading building. And the sand transloading building could encapsulate, not only, well, it encapsulates the sand carriers and the entire transloading process. Then, within the sand transloading building, the sand is transferred from an enclosed rail car to an enclosed conveyor and into an enclosed truck. Again, it's procedures. Mr. Wardlow said, "They drive the trucks around before they close their hatches." Well, procedures can tell you, you close the hatches when you pull the V-Sock off. If they don't have a V-Sock on there, they don't have to get back up on there until they get through the scales. So again, that's just procedure. That doesn't mean it's impossible to control that amount of dust. Here's where you get into the manufacturing. In terms of this sand transfer, it's the same product that goes, comes from the car, rail car into the truck. There's no manufacturing, no processing, no mixing, no storing, and no selling, because the transloader doesn't own the product. They just, they get paid for the number of cars, number of pounds or tons that they transload. That's, again, you get back to how many customers? Mr. Wardlow said it'd be 80 or 90 customers a day. Because nobody's going to bill out 80 or 90 customers a day to a truck driver. They're, the sand company up in the north, they own the sand, they bring it down here, and they sell it to the final user, which is the, either the fracker, or they're selling it like to EOG. I put together a business model based on the design of this particular property, but again, that's all off the table, and you could see something maybe bigger than this on other properties, and I understand that. But the way this property's configured and the way the rails are configured, it only, it would only carry about 20 or, about 20 rail cars. Go into this property conveniently, the way it can become in there. Even though there's 4,000 feet of track, probably not, effectively, not going to use over about, oh, maybe 1,000, 1,500 feet of it. Each time they deliver a car, they call that a switch. Here is, here's the pictures that the appellant gave us about the grain. That green conveyor you see up there, that's a grain conveyor that's been converted to load sand. It looks like it's got one side of it that just doesn't hold sand very well. It cost about $70,000. The one on the right is the new one, like I say, that Pinnacle started to use now in their operation up there on Hughes Street. It's a $155,000 conveyor. Again, the videos, I have to opine, that the videos you saw of a guy watching that sand fall off the side of a truck, that sand's worth about $140 a ton, and they're watching that stuff fall off the side of that truck, that's an inept employee operating substandard equipment. And if he worked for me, he wouldn't be there next day. All this equipment that we're going to look at here in a minute with Wilson, they have, and I'm sure you've studied it in your, with your details, are the kind of sophistication that we need in today's world to operate in the kind of environments, both the humanitarian environment and the physical environment that we work, we work in today. The, I was going to say that, this is that telescoping, telescoping seal that I was talking about, and when the operators out here at Pinnacle, I saw them the other day, they come down on a ladder, and then they step on this to seat it into the top of the trucks. Again, that's just procedures. They just don't use the V-Sock on the backside of it. The, this is, that was what I gave to the city council. Now, we're going to the appellant issues. And there's some serious issues here, and I think we know that the city council is in the process of fixing a lot of this stuff. And as we've talked to Guy Choate, they need to get on the stick and just do a moratorium on this, so it's, this little operation, or this decision-making is done by the city council, that's where it ought to be done. It ought to have input from the stakeholders, and it ought to be thoroughly thought through, and it ought to be massaged with great detail and with time. So if this property is off the table, and it's not going to be used, and you stop every other one, well, then, then all we have to do is let the political process take its course to make this thing done with due diligence and with the proper input. So here are these, here are these various areas. Dust, frac sand, that's the concern, that's the reason I took sand off the table, is because the community feels that this dust is, they are fearful that this dust is going to cause them long-term harm, and I don't want that to be part of our community heritage. So as I said, it's processed and cleaned, it drops only about six inches between the bottom of the rail car to this conveyor. Once it gets on the conveyor, if it's a first-class conveyor and operated by efficient people, it's all enclosed, all the way through to the truck. Dust filters should be on the open ports. They don't do it here. Just because it's not in the picture doesn't mean it shouldn't be done. And it's a very short process time, takes six minutes to load a truck. This was in the paper February 1st, and we talked, I know you've got a letter from a general practice, a doctor, and, but these are the statements, and if you don't mind, I'd like to read them, the ones in yellow. There's a lot of talk about OSHA. OSHA manages in the employee workplace, and they have identified that there is health problems, and highlighted here on the top, for industrial sand workers, long-term exposure to silica. That's a problem. The second paragraph here, they say it's inconclusive regarding the effects to those living near frac sand operations. And the third comment by Mr. Tony Crane is that no conclusive evidence has been found that demonstrates that sand mining, which is even more, I mean, that's 24/7, that sand mining leads to silicosis in people living in surrounding communities. Tony is with Iowa's College of Public Health. Kalachi dust. Now, we all know what kalachi dust is, because Louis and I have eaten a lot of kalachi dust over the year hunting quail. But the way you solve kalachi dust problems in an environment like we're talking about on Hill Street is to pave everything. That stops it. When you go to HEB, if you go to the parking lot in Big Lake that's got a dirt lot, there's dust everywhere. If you go to HEB, they have 15,000 vehicles a day, and you never see a dust cloud. It's all paved. The driveway into Hill Street, of course, is paved. That's the only part, the only part I've really worked with is trying to get, not trying to get, I got the, I have applied for the permits and been allowed to start building the little driveway that connects the property to Hill Street. That's obviously going to be paved. Everything's going to be paved. TCEQ says, "You can control the dust with water, with chemicals, or paving." They're the ones that control the dust. It's not the, it's not the city staff that would do that. The mitigation of dust, I think this is a big issue. If you want to mitigate the dust, you can do it. First of all, the dust is in enclosed carriers, the rail cars, the conveyors, and the trucks. Secondly, what you do is you encapsulate the whole thing. You bring a line of cars into a long building that looks like a silo, close the ends of it, put good ventilators on it, you, and have it large enough to cover the railroad tracks and to cover the trucks being loaded, and enclose all this, the whole process in a building. That's what you can do in a city environment. The fact on whether it's economical enough goes back to private property rights. If you want to spend the money to do it, you ought to have, you ought to have the right to do that. The Pinnacle, the new Pinnacle site that you've heard about, it's my understanding, they're going to do something on this order. They're going to use silos where each truck goes into a transloading building, and that the sand is being loaded there. It's not going to be, I don't believe it's closed on the ends, but it's closed on the sides, and has a roof on the top. Which, again, that's not, that's not, that helps them, what that helps them do two things is, one, they can run those trucks in there when it's raining, and they can load sand 24/7 if they need to. But you encapsulate the carriers and the process in a building, and the doors on the end of it, you put misters there, so when the doors open up, the misters keep any dust from going outside. It's insulated for sound, so that there's no vibration, there's no sound from any of the motors or anything that's going on. There's also padding for fencing that can be put on the outside. A lot of this happens up like in Denton and in California, they do that. And then you get well-trained employees that are professional to do the work. They drill, they drill oil wells in downtown Beverly Hills, California, but they enclose Again, the transloading building, it's insulated for sound and temperature, and the entrances are protected, it's well-ventilated, and they use state-of-the-art filtration system. How's our time doing, Mr. Chairman?
Continue.
Well, I was wondering about, is that lunch? You were talking about lunch a while ago, so we're pretty, we're pretty close to the end of this, there.
Just go ahead.
Okay. The sound issue. The way you, the way you solve the sound issue is you build a, you build a parking facility. If it's, if it is an issue, I don't think it is, because in my program, it was going If it is an issue, I don't think it is, because in my program, it was going to be 24 trucks a day, which is one an hour. But if you had a bigger facility for another property, because whatever you do here may affect something else. So you can make a parking garage, and then on the outside, you can enclose the extra parking, the overflow parking. What we saw on some of these Pinnacle sites was where the train didn't deliver the sand, so the trucks had to wait there. And probably the truck drivers were making more noise than the trucks were whenever they were sitting there waiting and not being able to take their load out. 24/7 lighting has been mentioned to me. Obviously, if you've got a transloading facility, a transloading building, it's all inside. But every adjacent building to this property, because it's got buildings all the way around it that are on the street, I don't have any streets on mine, but on the streets, every one of them has 24/7 lighting, and all the streets have 24/7 lighting. So I believe that's probably a benefit. Truck traffic is an issue. I have attempted to start a dialogue on trying to find a different way to get trucks into this property. Right now, I only have a place that's 72 feet wide to get in there. But in terms of the current neighborhoods, the trucks can't drive through the neighborhoods because it's prohibited to drive through the neighborhoods on the east side. And the other thing about it, and I saw that in the planning division, they're talking about making specific streets for sand transloading trucks. Here, if you have local drivers, they don't get confused and drive through the neighborhood. They know where they're going. They don't want to spend a bunch of extra money. What happens, and what this neighborhood is seeing, because some of the people that have warehouses there on Hill Street, they get third-party truckers coming in from New York City, and they get there, and they don't know where they're going, so they really get confused and they drive through the neighborhood. These truck drivers are going to be local. They won't do that. In terms of queuing, I think Mr. Roark mentioned queuing along the street. Not going to do that. This property's 10 acres. It'd be big enough to handle 100 trucks. And then if they were there, then enclose the sound with a parking structure or with some sort of padded walls to keep the sound from going out of the property. Right now, Bryant Freeway has 31,000 cars a day. Our business model was looking at 24 trucks a day. And I really was concerned about mitigating the truck traffic on Hill. Jesse's worried about it. David's worried about it. And so like I say, I've looked at that. There's, the property is cut off by the rail, but there's, Bryant Boulevard is just 200 feet west of this property. There is a right-of-way, right now, the city has a right-of-way that comes within about 20 or 30 feet from the railroad track, which I have permission to go across. So we're working with that, and we'll see if that can come to fruition. The other place is to come off Montecito, and that would be up a little further. I don't like that because you have to come in, instead of coming in a, basically a dormant kind of street, you'd have to go down, you'd have to go down an already street there that's got some, it's all zone light manufacturing, but there are some houses in there. I'd prefer not to go that way if I couldn't, but those are two places to get the traffic off of Hill Street, and it'd be only a distance of only about 200 feet. Train traffic, the way trains come in there, if you look at A here at the top, that's how a switch would come in. You'd put up, now, I'm not a train person, but this is what they tell me, or I could have misunderstood it. But you've got the engine in the front, you've got the cars in the back. That's the best way to move a train. They would come in at A up here at the top and go into that little red, the yellow is the main line. That's the one, five times a day, that you can hear all the way across to Santa Rita School. And you can hear them going all the way through there, all, five times a day, especially about 10:30 at night. But at A, it would, the train, they'd do a switch, and it would come off onto the red line. The red line is the dormant line. That's the line that hadn't been used in 40 years. It could come down that parallel to the main line, and then it would stop at B before the red hits the yellow again, disconnect the cars, the engine could move to the yellow, and then go back up to the main yard. That's the way they could drop it. To come back, all they had to do is come in the other end, an engine could come in on A, back in, well, they go both ways. So they would hook onto the empty cars and take them right straight up back to the main Is there any, the reason I spent a little time on this is because Johnny had a little challenge on, when I presented this the first time to the city council, he wasn't really sure. He kind of thought this train was going to go across Bryant Freeway and block a bunch of traffic and everything. You see where Bryant is, way down there at the bottom. So the train that would deliver cars here, railcars here would never hit Bryant Boulevard. The railroad people tell me they deliver between midnight and 5 o'clock. That's when the residents are in bed, the businesses are closed, and the street traffic is minimal. Minimal, excuse me. The neighborhood safeguards, two of them, obviously got legal recourse. If this thing didn't work the way that TCEQ said it ought to be working, TCEQ would shut you down. And the local people could shut you down. And the distance, it's 300 yards, I mean, excuse me, yeah, 300 yards football field from a street to where the transloading would take place. And it's across, you have to go across a big building or some sort of yard to get to a street, and then the residential areas are past that. Of course, they're the other side of the street. My conclusion is that, as demonstrated by this presentation, using capable management, good design, state-of-the-art equipment, within the confines of a specifically designed transloading and parking structure, can operate a transloading facility in compliance with warehouse and freight movement category of the zoning ordinance. This transloading facility would not look anything like, or be operated anything like Barnhart or Pinnacle. And if I could not, if it could not be operated with state-of-the-art and not cause any problems for our community, I would not even have operated it all. So, again, I'm stating, well, it won't be operated at all, because we've already determined and assured you that there will never be a sand transloading facility on this land. Thank you very much for your attention. May I, do you have any questions?
Let's take a break, and Mr. Wardlaw, if you have any questions you have, we'll let you go first, and the board will ask questions.
Thank you very much.
About half an hour to 45 minutes? Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fluger.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the media will come back to order. Mr. Fluger, were you finished?
As he gathers his material, we have two photographs that he just wants to distribute briefly and tell you about, and then he'll be ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you. What I would like, I just forgot this, when you get to be my age, that happens often, when I was going through my presentation. I've got some copies of some facilities. That I would like to enter to the record. Should be three. Did you get all three? Did you get all three? Okay. Now, when you talk about a facility that is as expansive as I was mentioning about the sand transloading terminal or warehouse, you look at it and you say, well, you know, it seems like it'd be a very challenging project to do. The Chalk Mountain people, what they did is they retrofitted a couple of big warehouses there on Bell Street. And what they did, they load the sand into the warehouses, and then they load out of the warehouses. I don't think, Mr. Wardlaw, you said they've been there 10 times, but there wasn't any dust emission out of these. That's the reason we didn't get any pictures of them, possibly. But that's the kind of containment that I'm talking about, that you can operate these things inside a building and then control all the dust. The other thing it does for an operator, you say, well, that's very expensive. The rail that's adjacent to this property that I had over there, when I just looked at it, didn't know that much about rail, and I found out that some of the rail is not as usable as others, was that the rail costs $200 a foot to build, and there was 4,000 feet of rail on it, so immediately it's $800,000 worth of rail. And so, or adjacent, not on it, but adjacent, that could have been used, maybe. And so you could build, easily build another $500,000 or $800,000 building, whereas if you relocated that, if you had an operation wanting to put it somewhere else that didn't have rail, first thing you have to do is build $800,000 worth of rail. The big advantage of being able to operate out of a transloading building like I'm talking about is you can do it rain or shine. So you can bring all, you can keep working when it's raining outside. Otherwise, in these outside operations, every time it rains, well, of course, the dust goes down because there's no, there's no colichy dust coming off the parking lot, but also the sand gets wet and it won't flow. So I just wanted to share that with you. I'm sorry I didn't do it during my presentation, but I just wanted to show that that's an operation that operated there on Bell Street, right north of Producers Livestock Auction. Yes, sir?
Let's do Mr. Wardlaw's question first.
Oh, that's right.
So you're finished with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wardlaw has already given me this question. Could you take these photos here? Look at these? And his question is, do you know who owns these two transloaders located on Bird Street next to Oak Street? If so, who?
Yes, sir, I do know who owns them. I'm storing those for a fellow in Fort Worth. But obviously, if you asked me now, I couldn't tell you his name. He operates Python, which is a, he's a fracker, and he fracks on my ranch at Big Lake. When I leave here, I don't know exactly who, I'll get his name, but he fracks the wells on my ranch at Big Lake for Approach. It's the oil company that drills on my ranch.
Okay, Mr. Wardlaw, do you have a follow-up question with that, or is that good enough?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll remember it, I'll remember it here in a minute.
All right, questions from the board. Mr. Roark.
When you ship this, it's loaded out of the building, is it come to the car, and then it's brought into the building? Or I'm trying to understand how it's in the building.
These people are a little hesitant to go through the process with me because of all the information going on. I just know that they store their, I am told, that they store the sand inside the building, and then they load out of those buildings.
So you don't really?
I don't really know exactly how they do it.
Okay, any more questions from the board? I have a simple question. I heard you say 10 acres a while ago. Did you, that group property grow by five acres?
Yes, sir, it did. I leased four acres, and I owned six acres.
Okay. So it's actually 10 acres there that you're going to be utilizing if you did this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Salarri?
The photographs that were just offered, the board needs to address them.
Okay, we need to admit those as evidence. Does any board member have a problem with that? Okay, we'll admit those as evidence, those two photographs. Did you have something, Mr. Allen?
Yes, in a question-and-answer setting, often there's redirect, and I was just going to ask Mr. Fluger to clarify one point.
Okay.
And so, Lee, what I would like for you to make sure and make clear is why you've brought the pictures of that building, because that shows a structure that dovetails with your plan. Is that right? How you would do it?
Well, actually, no. I mean, that just shows that you can encapsulate, and it would work financially to do sand transload out of that building. I would not, if I were going to start from scratch, I wouldn't design it exactly like that. I would design it where it comes to the edge of the rail and comes over and covers the rail and covers the car, the truck. So that all the equipment is encapsulate, all the process is encapsulated within the building.
Completely encapsulated, so there'll be doors on both ends?
Yes, sir. Be doors on both ends. Yes, sir. Exactly.
Okay, any more questions from the board?
I'll get that name for you, Mr. Wardlaw.
Okay, we're now up to the public comment portion.
Mr. Allen, I wanted to make clear when I began that the presentation would begin with myself, then Mr. Fluger, and now I have a summation of sort.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I was pleased to be able to deliver the packet to you that I did today. That agreement began to form, as Mr. Fluger said, sometime around Christmas, probably before. We were able to make an agreement with our neighbors last night. And so I want to address a question that is being asked over and over and over again, and that is, okay, if there's not going to be any transloading of frac sand at this site, why did we have to sit through 30 minutes of slides about transloading frac sand? And I want to be very careful to explain that to you. So from that explanation, you'll know where we are now. And one factor, probably a minor one, is simply, we were able to reach this agreement last night, and the materials that we prepared were in anticipation of defending a sand-loading facility. We no longer have to do that because that will not occur on this property. So I want to make very sure that we've been clear on that. Now, there are other reasons why we went ahead and made that presentation. Number one is because this is not a trial, this is an appeal. An appeal looks back in time to see whether the facts applied to the law at the time were correct. So you have to take those facts and bring them up here. So we made a record that the planning department, in dealing with this situation, was assured that all present and future uses of the property would be carefully tailored to make sure that the property complied 100% with light manufacturing zoning. Here is another important point, and that is to prove that Mr. Fluger, from the very start, acquired all of the information and put together his ability to acquire and use state-of-the-art equipment in order to operate this facility. Now, the zoning laws don't say anything about state-of-the-art equipment, but regardless of the law that applies, we clearly made a record that Mr. Fluger's operations and his intents on this property, in this instance, would be tailored to minimize and to eliminate adverse effect and nuisance on his neighbors. And so that's another reason why we went through all that, is to show you the criteria that was used and the equipment and other processes. that was used and the equipment and other processes. Now, those form the quote-unquote "proposed use." The proposed use is what has been presented to you. The proposed use is not frac sand loading in Barnhart or on Hughes Street. The proposed use is the thing that was examined by city staff and was found to have complied with light manufacturing zoning. So they proved that this proposed use, even though it's been waived off, was compliant under the light manufacturing zoning categorization. Another very important factor is that the ruling is still being contested, and since frac sand, obviously, we've attempted to negotiate to resolve this by taking frac sand off the table, and we have not been successful. As Mr. Wardlaw said, he demands a reversal of the planning department's decision. He demands and seeks out a vote from 75% of you that the decision was in error in total. And so, you'll recall that Mr. Fluger had a slide that had other instances of oil and gas products that could be transloaded at the site. And he's been very careful to make it clear that we've taken sand off the table for a number of reasons, but the value of the property and that rail spur continue to be of value to him for other things that are less threatening to the, to the public. One is drill pipe, drilling mud, and other chemicals. Now, go back to the original question that was posed to the city, and that is, can I use this property for the transloading and storage of products used in the oil and gas industry, including frac sand? Now, if I was looking back and advising, going back in time and advising Mr. Fluger how to do this, I would have told him, "Lee, you need to take that frac sand stuff out of there because that's going to cause us all a lot of time and trouble. Leave it out of there and just show up, start loading frac sand, and you'll come in under the radar." But the purpose and the process was to be completely transparent so that what was reviewed by city staff would be the use that would indeed take place out there. Lee's been doing that for years through his experience in developing real estate. That's his due diligence process. And so he would have told me at that point in time, "No, I'm not going to do that because I don't want to spend a whole lot of money and then wake up six months or a year down the road and find out that I have a problem on my hand." So that's why we went back to these copies of these pictures of frac sand conveyors and V-Sox and all of these state-of-the-art processes and advised you as a board that that proposed use, if necessary, will include structures on the property to contain noise, vibration, emission of dust from any source whatsoever. And that is the pledge, and that is the fact and the use of the property. So, let's revisit now what we've heard today. And the, the board today addresses a very simply stated, but very complex proposition, and that is, was Mr. Howard and his department correct when they advised that transloading and storing of products used in the oil and gas industry, including frac sand, could occur on this property in the light manufacturing zoning district? I was very impressed with the presentation today. It was very clear, and it is very clear on one point. And that is that the city has a highly detailed and highly documented standard operating procedure that they use any time a landowner seeks out an opinion, an advisory opinion concerning the use of the property. And that was done here. One very important part of that was to determine whether this definition could fit the property. So here's the process. Number one, determine the use. That was easy here because it was put in writing, and this phrase has continually been in the record that the city staff has used in supporting their decision. So step two is determine the category. And I want to note, this is, this is very clear, this is very clear, because the criteria that are mentioned, there's no gray area. It is not a service, it's not an artisan craft, it's not livestock. So it fell only in one category, and that is warehouse and freight movement. Now, I want to show you something. This is an email that was in our presentation, this was an email that was in the public record, public open records request given to Mr. Choate. And I've taken and highlighted two phrases in there. This is a question from, to, this is a reply from Mr. Patrick to Mr. Valenzuela, the city manager. And he says, "Here's where the big issue is, is that the opponents are suggesting that this is manufacturing and production." But he says, "That's not the case because nothing is being manufactured and nothing is being produced. And today, there's still no evidence that anything is being manufactured or produced." And so, that statement, which has been supported here by evidence, is, gives us the one piece of evidence, the key, that indeed fits in to this lock. And there are no gray areas or shades that support anything else. Now, the next step is to determine if there are any specific performance standards that apply to this property, and there are none. And the provisions in Article Four are clearly labeled, and they're clearly associated, and the supporting materials make it clear, that there are no specific performance standards for a use under warehouse and freight movement. And that is the end of the inquiry. That is the end of the thought process that the city used. But it is not the end of our presentation. What has also been presented to you is, win, lose, or draw, the owner of this property intends and will take significant, well-thought-out, state-of-the-art activity to avoid adverse impact or nuisance to his neighbors. Avoid is a bad word. To minimize and eliminate. And so, I agree with Mr. Patrick that Section 506 is a description of the uses in there, it is not a governing statute, but we comply with it. We clearly comply with it. And with frac sand off the table, we clear that hurdle by leaps and bounds. And so, that's the process. Although it was simple, it was not poorly thought out or hastily done. What you have is a standard operating procedure, evidence going back for supporting evidence, there is an email from, that was produced directly from TCEQ and Mr. Fluger, that this is not waste and that it is indeed compliant with all laws that apply. Now, I do think it is notable that in the evidence that was presented by Mr. Wardlaw, there is no complaint about the transloading of any other material besides sand. And I think that's noteworthy because now the record is devoid of any evidence that transloading other materials besides sand could even be some type of violation of the light manufacturing zoning. So I think you have a very clear record here that with the agreement not to transload sand, that the property is indeed compliant with all of the statutes that are applicable here. There's a use table, and it's confusing, it's hard to access, and I always wondered, why do we have to flip through all those pages? Because you got to, if you, if you print them out, you got to put your thumb in one, you got to put it back and forth, and you got to look at the headings, and it's cumbersome. But now I know, because that use table is the most comprehensive way to communicate this patchwork of zoning laws that we have in effect. And it worked in this situation. And the reason it's important to express to you that it is comprehensive and that does communicate clearly and it was used properly here is because it ensures the uniform treatment of all people under all the laws. And so, this issue about, this issue about adverse impact on the neighbors, other uses of the property or other governing laws. I play my electric guitar at church. There are people at church, believe it or not, say I play it too loud. There are kids at the church that play it louder than I do. There are people that like to drive the streets and crank up their subwoofers. The kids at the church should not have a bigger say on that volume and use and intrusion than the other folks that have a different attitude. And so we boil these down, and we put them in place, and we abide by them so that everyone is treated fairly. Zoning ordinances should govern all people without regard to who they are or the business that they are in. It's also important because the landowner is the one saddled with the burden to comply, and they are saddled with the burden to invest the money in the property to make sure that it fully complies. So they checked Article Four, are there any other rules that apply, and there are no other rules for warehouse and freight movement? It still takes great care, Mr. Fluger still takes great care and will take great care to put whatever operations that are out there, to put them in as state-of-the-art facilities that will be the best that he can be to his neighbors. Now, that's still not the end of the process. There is a what-if, and so I entitled this section "The Recourse." There's been a lot of worry about, and some attitude here, that, okay, if you affirm this decision, then everybody is subject to the abuses that Mr. Wardlaw has depicted in Barnhart and on Hughes Street. And that is not the case. The recourse, the other mechanisms to address this are not only clear and quite, they're not only clear and not only very responsive, but they've already started. And so number one is, the recourse is to petition the policymakers. And we've already seen that started, it started in October. Folks called this issue to light, Lee came and gave a presentation, and then it was brought up again this month as a resolution. And there's been a lot of consternation about, what can we do? We're a city council, what can we do about this parcel? And the answer was correctly given, you can't do anything about this parcel right now, but we're going to get busy and do something about it. And sure enough, the planning commission has already met. From our conversations with Mr. Weiss over the weekend, and as Mr. Choate reported, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Saluri are considering the ramifications and processes for a moratorium. We did that with the man camp issue when it just jumped all over us, and I think we did that successfully. A moratorium can be put into place, and the city council, along with the planning commission, can change or amend all of these laws. Now, we put a provision in the agreement that we presented to you today to make sure, where Lee would assure those four appellantants, that he would not claim that he was somehow grandfathered into the law. My understanding is, is that it's very difficult to be grandfathered into the law in a situation like this. And so, I represent to you today that this property is not going to be grandfathered, and I think Lee takes a slight risk by agreeing that it doesn't matter what his vested interest is when the new laws come down the pike, he's going to be bound by them, even if he has invested money in transloading rail pipe or items in bags or any type of cargo. I looked out before I began to make a presentation to you, I saw the mayor, I saw a councilperson's farmer, grind staff, I saw Mr. Vardman. I'm sure that Mr. Silvas and Mr. Self and the other members of the council and the planning commission are watching this proceeding with great care, and they certainly should because this is a forum that will examine and dissect the issues that they're going to have to tackle when they take that task upon themselves. You see, that's their mantle to carry. That is their mantle to carry, and they're off and running. So if you're, if you are there, and whether or not it's a consideration, you have a concern, if I don't do something, what's going to happen? Well, the good news is, if you don't do something, the law's going to work. This matter has been set aside by a citizen who's willing to let the process take place, and city government wheels are cranking as we speak. Now, that's not the end of that story. The next step is government enforcement, and I use the word government very intentionally. I could have said city enforcement, and I would be right. Now, Mr. Turner, you made a point that was very clear, and that was, okay, so if somebody comes under warehouse and freight, is that the end of the story? And the answer was, from the zoning standpoint, yes, it is. That's where the decision tree stops. But I'm here to tell you that that's not where the city's role in the property stops. The next step will outline causes of action for public nuisance and other actions that the city can take if Lee gets a wild hair and just decides to go out there and start loading whatever he wants, including frac sand. Or let's say that the commodity he picks somehow is not included in our stipulation. If it's a public nuisance, the city can step in to stop that, even though it may be in technical compliance with the zoning. But I use the government word to make it very clear that it's a bigger picture than that. It's not just the city, and we've had that discussion. Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, all of the parties, including city planning, went through a very detailed research of this permit by rule, and they did that in part on their own and then in part due to inquiries from one of the appellantants. Are we looking at all the air quality standards? And the answer was yes. TCEQ's dealing with frac sand, they're doing it under some old laws, but the point is, you got to have an air permit if you're going to take care of this. We've got frac sand off the table, but there are still a significant patchwork of protections in the form of government enforcement that will govern this property. The most significant, Texas Department of Public Safety, and then again, the city still retains the ability to restrict and control traffic on its streets, and that is completely outside the governance. So I thought your comment was very insightful, but I wanted to add on top of that, that that's not, as far as city government is concerned, that's not the end of the inquiry. And I want to give that to you as some comfort as this problem is handed over to you. And then we talk about the rights of private individuals, and nuisance has been put out here or has been mentioned, but there are also lawsuits for negligence and for trespass. And then there are also the laws that provide for redress if somebody is actually hurt off the site attributable to this. I put it at the bottom because it's cold comfort to you that somebody would have to go out there and take the, and pay a lawyer to take their private action, but I want to make sure everybody understands that zoning does not affect these laws. If someone creates a nuisance, the fact that they're operating in compliance with zoning is of little evidentiary support or defense at all. And so, the point is, is that this is not the end of the story, and this is not the, and if you choose to affirm this decision, you are not dropping the citizens of this fair city in the proverbial dirt, for lack of a better term. The point is, is there's another set, another myriad of laws that are acting at a number of levels that will address this. But I want to point out what I think has been the most effective control over this situation in the city of San Angelo, and that is the heart and soul of the citizens of the city of San Angelo. We came in, we had an agreement. Did everybody agree to it? No. But we worked through our differences with four of the five. What do we do with the one that's left? We give him his time at this pulpit, at this podium, and we allow him to And we allow him to, um, address his grievances. And Mr. Wardlaw and I have talked about, uh, other issues, uh, in city government and in this rulemaking process. And that, uh, that process will continue after this and it will serve us, um, in itself. Most significantly, Mr. Fluger realized that he'd put something out there that caused a lot of discomfort and mistrust and concern. And he began trying to work out an agreement where he could maintain the value in this property that he has without, uh, creating turmoil or worry or concern on the part of his neighbors. Now, is that an enforceable law? No. But, it's certainly a dynamic that has worked in this situation. And I would offer to you, uh, it will work again and work until the city is able to properly address this situation for the future, uh, in this circumstance. So, um, here's your task and I've got to be careful. I learned a long time ago not to tell my wife what she couldn't, couldn't do. And so, uh, but I'm a lawyer and as part of this presentation, it's important for me to be clear with you what I think your powers are. Because, uh, that is an argument, because, um, I must say that city, city staff and Mr. Saluri, we've all gone through these processes that, that seem so restrictive and so formal to make sure that this is done right. Because if we don't do it right, then it, it, uh, could come undone. And so, uh, it's important. Uh, it's important. And I think you know, uh, what your powers are at this point in time. But, it's my duty to give you simply a small reminder of that. And so, the assignment is for you to determine if city staff correctly interpreted the zoning laws that are now in effect. And I'm very intentional about that language. And I'm intentional about what is not in that. And, um, I'm going to be glad for the citizens to come and speak to you. Uh, I will offer to you that those comments are only useful in that they relate to whether the evidence that, uh, Mr. Patrick and his staff, uh, reviewed when they made this determination. Uh, and if there's something in there that supports or negates that, then that is evidence on this decision. But, I beg you and I entreat you, please be careful in the way you treat that public comment. Because, uh, you have the key to the zoning review process. But, that key does not fit into the planning commission process. It does not fit into the lawmaking machine. It does not fit into the machine that takes the will of the people and grinds them into laws. Uh, you're judges. And the judges have to work with the laws that they have, with the evidence that relates to it, not all of the evidence. And so, the evidence of the use of the property as it's fitted into the framework of the laws, that's all of the toys we get to play with here. And, and please hear me, I can't imagine, I mean, I'm busy enough. I know a number of you and I know you are extremely busy. And so, for you to sit there for no money and go through this at least once a month, and in this case, far more than that, uh, is a great service to the community and I honor you for that. And so, I'm not nagging you or I'm not fussing at you. I'm just saying, from my standpoint, this is so precious that I've got to say it. And so, I have no doubt you fully intend and will do the right thing. Uh, I just want to be very careful in how I describe it to you. And so, we simply can't make new law here. People are already started doing that. And so, the question for you is, um, what did Mr. Patrick take these laws that are in that table and in that book? And did they examine them correctly? And Mr. Pat, uh, Mr. Howard's, uh, did I call you Mr. Patrick? I'm very sorry. Okay. That's, that's two for me, Mr. Turner. I'm sorry. Did Mr. Howard and his staff take that book with all those complex laws in that table? And did they use it correctly when they gathered up all of this evidence through that 10-step procedure and those questions to the TCEQ and the questions from the appellants and the, and, uh, the interrogatories that they made back and forth, uh, with folks? Did they take that evidence and did they fit it into that book correctly? And the presentation was flawless. It was very clear and it's obviously accurate. Now, we, I want to roll my eyes when a lawyer shows up at a hearing at the JP Court or the county court and starts talking about the Constitution and due process. You would think that's for Alan Dershowitz and the long-haired guys up in Washington to roll in front of the Supreme Court. The reason we feel that way is because we don't realize how many times this concept of due process works in our life. I went to church yesterday. Uh, I read the newspaper today and some of the comments I liked, some of the comments I didn't like. Also, a part of that due process is a promise from those guys way back there that fought for their independence from the British. As long as we're here, nobody's going to take value away from you without giving you a chance to be judged by laws that are in the, in place. And so, you know, it just works here. It's like you don't think about it. It's like air. You know, you don't think about the air when you breathe. And so, we are so used to due process, but it is so precious. And so, on that last point, no matter what that value is, whether it's the right to speak or the right to use your property as you see fit or the right not to use your property as you see fit, Mr. Fluger's right to have the zoning laws that Mr. Howard presented applied to the evidence and to have the, an decision on this appeal determined under that and only that. It's priceless. It is indeed priceless. So, it sounds trite and, uh, I'm not grandstanding here. I realize, you know, it sounds specious, but I promise you, I am sincere. So, you have to allow Mr. Fluger's property to be evaluated under the laws that are currently in force. And then, you have to take a deep breath and trust those new rules and those what-ifs and the mechanism to address the concerns that you're about to hear. You, someone else has been given that job. And so, you've got to take a deep breath and trust that process and let someone else take care of them. Lee has put in writing here that he will abide by the decision of both processes and he always has. And so, I think your decision here today, as I understood Mr. Wardlaw's, um, request of the group, he wants this decision reversed. And the ordinances and the Texas local government code are very clear. It will require a vote of at least four of you to reverse. We want to be equally clear. We think it was impeccably designed, well-thought-out. It was reviewed, vetted, and it's being reheared here today. And so, I submit to you that it's unquestionable, but that this, uh, should be affirmed and upheld. And that's what I request that you so vote today. So, I thank you for sitting through that. Uh, I regret, I apologize if I was melodramatic, but it's an important thing. So, there you have it and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Wardlaw, do you have any questions?
Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Uh...
Would you, do you have them in writing?
No, uh, no, I believe I do write them. I have a lot of lengthy response to that lengthy, uh, presentation here in a minute, but let's go on with the public comment.
You do know that you have 10 minutes left, right? That, that's what, that's what time you have left, just 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, we'll move into the public comment. We have, um, those that signed up to speak. You'll be allowed up to three minutes, subject to additional time necessary to respond to questions that any board member may ask. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Sylvia Martinez.
Chamber, my name is Sylvia R. Martinez. Uh, my address is 818 San Jacinto Street. As, uh, I hope and I've been praying that, uh, the chamber will have the wisdom to, uh, find the decision that is right for this. Because as, uh, a property owner, I wouldn't want my property that I have to be told what to do or not to do. I have, uh, my son owns a building that I, I worked it for 13 years. Uh, because of my neighbors, I became disabled with COP. And, um, it don't matter if they win or not, the air is not clean in that neighborhood. This man can build whatever he wants, but it's still, the air is not clean. That's why I'm having issues with my breathing. And I had to come to let you all know that. Uh, it, you know, we live in a free country right now. Or, or don't we? Or we don't have no more rights. Because I feel that as an American, uh, we have the honor to be, uh, able to choose what we want when we buy a property. But, it has, it has seemed to me that people want to take over what they want. What, put yourselves in that man's place. I don't know that man. I come here as, like I said, a owner of a property. And I hope that you will take this in consideration because I feel that everybody is entitled to own their property and, and have whatever they're entitled to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Charlotte Farmer.
Yes, sir. My name is Charlotte Farmer. I live at 4034 Laurel Oak here in San Angelo. First of all, I would like to thank both the proponents and the opponents of this issue for bringing things forward. I want to thank you, the board, for the time that you have spent on this gracefully. I'm very impressed with the meeting that has been conducted today in a very professional manner and I, I really appreciate the study and the work that you guys have done here today. A little bit about myself, I, yes, I am 10 years on the city council. However, I'm here as an independent taxpaying citizen. I want to make that very clear up front. Um, I have spent the last 10 years and six years prior to that on various city boards, uh, reviewing zoning issues and am very familiar with various zoning ordinances and read them more often than I would like. I've spent 30 years in the real estate industry, including subdivision development and mortgage lending and, uh, interim construction finance lending right here in San Angelo and other cities, based on my knowledge and experience with zoning issues, frac sand operation. To me, in my opinion, is based on heavy manufacturing, not light manufacturing. And I say that because I feel like the ordinance that is in place, the issues of noise, nuisance and safety need to be first and foremost. And yes, it is the private citizen's right who owns property to do what they wish, but within reason to the safety of the neighboring properties. And I'm going to bring, for instance, roosters in our city was voted to be and put in as a nuisance. So, if you understand, uh, the diesel trucks and the noise and the hours of operation of frac sanding, you can understand why I feel heavily that this is a nuisance. But, most of all, the safety issue, I firmly believe that this is, frac sanding is a health hazard. I brought with me today to share, to enter into evidence, um, information from the CDC that anybody can pull up, Google the information. 2012 is its printed date with reference to frac sanding, sand manufacturing and the health hazards that it does produce with the silica sand. Uh, I brought that for the council to review or the, excuse me, the board to review and to have more information if they don't have it. I also brought with me today to enter into evidence, I'm a notekeeper, a very detailed notekeeper of my activities. On October 20th, I had invited the city manager and the city planning manager to come and let's review frac sanding and the hazards that it was providing in a nearby community. I'm more than happy to read those to you today, if I may be permitted, as to what was said, what was discussed, or I can provide them to you now. I also have a little bit of knowledge in frac sand. My father was in oil and gas fields right over here in Big Lake, Texas. I have traveled in and out of San Angelo since 1965, going through the Barnhart and the area simply because that's, my father was independently employed and that's how he made his living. My late husband was an oil and gas consultant. He worked for Devon. He worked for, uh, EOG in Ron Oil and Gas, Apache, Navajo. His job was to call in when they called for frac sands, how they operated. And living with someone for close to 20 years, you get to know a little bit about what they do. So, I'm not against that industry, not at all. It provided a very nice, affordable living for us. And I want to let the people in the audience know, I personally am not against this type business here in San Angelo. It brings jobs. It's what created us in the oil boom, the wild cutter way back when. However, in real estate, the very first thing that I learned in Real Estate Procedures 101 is location, location, location. And I firmly believe that this location where it was approved was erroneous, that it was not considered the noise, the nuisance and the safety issue which would throw it into heavy manufacturing and it should be zoned as such. And I ask that you give the consideration to those issues. I can speak from a health issue.
Okay, Ms. Farmer, that's three minutes.
All right. One moment. Health issue?
We can take that into your...
Thank you. I do have...
As far as evidence, but we don't have time to read it.
Sarcoy. Sarcoy is a lung disorder.
Ma'am, I don't want to be rude, but we've got to keep it to three minutes.
I'm not being rude. I'm just exercising my right as a taxpaying citizen. I've waited all day and you can give me a half minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. It looks like Pat Baker. What do you think, Louis?
I saw Pat earlier, but he may have worn out.
I saw Pat. Was he hurt?
I think he must have gone.
Okay. You read that?
Nancy...
Is that an N?
I think so.
Nancy York?
That would have been my guess. I haven't seen Nancy.
If I get even close, raise your hand.
Nancy's all right.
Rachel Beaver?
Yeah, I saw Rachel.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Rachel Beaver. I'm the Director of House of Faith. Um, we are directly across the chain link fence from this, uh, property that this site had been considered for. And, uh, first off, I would just like to say thank you, gentlemen, for taking this off the table, the Sand Depot. Appreciate that very much. Um, and, um, but I would also like for you to continue to consider, based on some information that was given today, as you're considering whether this goes into the light or heavy manufacturing. Um, item 316B1 out of characteristics, the difference between light and heavy is their effect on the surrounding area. And as you're considering, uh, the decision that you're going to be making, um, the issue concerning the heavy, uh, traffic that, um, these trucks are going to be bringing in, I'm not sure what even is going in the proposed site. But, I know that, um, Mr. Fluger, on one of your slides, he did, uh, show two different entrances into that property. And one was... into that property, and one was coming through down Avenue H, and then over the railroad tracks, which also would have to cross some of our property. And I did tell, when asked about using that easement, I did say no, because of the fact that our transportation and the people that volunteer for us come in through that entrance, our fence. We've spent a couple of years, well, actually, several years, finally getting a fence built for our vehicles, and that entrance is for the safety of our children. So when we come in one way, we have a safe place to park our vehicles, the kids exit, and then we have a way to exit out. And so that entrance provides a safe entryway into our property. And so if the consideration is that there's going to be a lot of heavy traffic, if that is something that's being proposed, well, that you would take that into consideration, the trucks and the vehicles that would be coming through, whether it's the, over the railroad tracks at Montecito, which would go right down Montecito, or not. But this has been brought up, noxious fumes, melodious impacts, fewer noxious effects, noise, smoke, odor, dust. These are all some of the things that I would ask you to consider as you consider whether this is light or heavy manufacturing, so that our great city will not be exposed to this kind of issue again. And I do appreciate all that you do, and on behalf of the children and the volunteers, and on behalf of House of Faith, I want to thank you for the time that you're putting in to consider the future for our city. And the things that we've learned through this process, I think, are extremely valuable as we learn how to work together. And appreciate you and the work that you've done, and as we go from here, that we will work together.
Thank you.
Can we ask her a question?
Yes. We need to ask you a question.
Yes.
What is the, is that street you were referring to, is that Montecito?
Well, Montecito is on one side of our property, and then on the other side, between our property and the U-Haul, is Avenue H that deadens into our property.
Okay. So it'd be Montecito where the children are going to go.
Actually, Avenue H, we come across Avenue H, enter the back fence, park our vehicles, and then we have an entryway into our area where the kids play. And so we're very appreciative that there is not going to be sand in the air, because our children are right there. But we'd like for you to consider all the aspects that go along with that.
And then you exit on Montecito.
And then we exit on Montecito. So it's a clean enter and exit for all of our vehicles. So, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Beverly Grinda, did I say that right?
Yeah, I don't see her.
Dr. J.C. Grinda?
I don't see him either.
Shelley Emmons? Stanley Mayfield?
Stanley's here, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stanley Mayfield, 1115 South Hill Street. I'm the owner of Mayfield Paper Company, is located at that address. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Fluger for withdrawing his plan. I appreciate that immensely. I think we have a lot to learn from his presentation. And then our zoning laws are certainly, our zoning guidelines are certainly not up to date, and would have to be considerate of exactly the use and how the use is to be applied, whether it deteriorates over time with technology and equipment and life of equipment, and so on and so forth. Now, he presented what is possible, but unfortunately, what is possible is not always what is practiced. So I think we have to look at this in light of what is practiced that we know of today. What I have to say now, will be hypothetical, because we're not going to have the sand plant there, which I deeply appreciate, but I still want to make issues and bring issues to your attention, which will be factors if someone were to want to come back in, in another location in town, under this classification, light industrial, or even commercial. And we do not want to be exposed to these issues. My dad was a B-25 instructor pilot at Goodfellow, and in 1945, when the war was winding down, he decided to make San Angelo his home, and so he started Mayfield Paper Company. We're a third-generation business. We don't want to leave San Angelo, and we don't want to shut down our business. But we have serious issues with the concept of having a sand plant in the vicinity of our business. The proposed one was in very close proximity. The tracks he would come in and out on are 100 feet, approximately 100 feet from our building, and we would be exactly downwind of that facility. Now, a tough concern is, and Mr. Allen, I think, alluded to the fact that he did not want this entered in any of our discussion and your consideration, but in your pocket you will find a copy of a page from our employee injury insurance policy. There are two substances that are specifically excluded from our coverage, asbestos and silica. Now, what this means is, if we have an employee who claims injury due to silica, we're not covered by the insurance company. The exclusion of silica in this coverage is a clear indication of how dangerous this substance is. Even if we could get insurance coverage, we cannot in good conscience allow our employees to be exposed to this hazard. So what are the consequences? Should we have a sand plant adjacent to us? We could be forced to move after 33 years in the same location at no fault of our own. In order to build a new facility, naturally, I would have to have some equity out of our current facility, which of course has theoretically now been reduced to zero value. So what are our options? We could move out of town. We can move out of the city limits, take our inventory and take our building off the tax rolls. We could lose jobs. The potential loss of jobs just in the perimeter around this proposed facility is estimated at 250 jobs. Residences, you've got to think about this. Residents in the surrounding homes will lose value in their probably most valuable asset.
Mr. Mayfield, your three minutes is up, and we can't take that into consideration anyway. That's not something we can even...
You don't have to, but I think it's something you need to hear, because you do not understand the impact, obviously, by the first decision of what the impact of this could have been on San Angelo. And these citizens that came here understand it. And if you don't want to listen...
Sir, we're citizens too, and we're giving everybody three minutes. And I respect you.
You don't have your entire life's investment in a business adjacent to this, sharing a rail siding with it, 100 feet from it. I don't think you're going to, would you come by my facility for the market value from 10 years ago?
Well, if you're asking me questions, I wouldn't build a house next to your facility. And I'm not saying that because there's anything wrong with it, it's a commercial property. I don't want to live next door to it. But that doesn't have anything to do with this case.
It has everything to do with this case, sir. The zoning that allows a toxic substance to be in that proximity to residential and logically place their commercial businesses is totally illogical. It is not logical. That's why we have heavy industrial out of town.
Mr. Mayfield, I know you're passionate about it. We've heard that from Mr. Wardlaw, and we hear you loud and clear, and I respect you.
Okay.
But time's up.
I'll make one more statement then. In conclusion, and I hope you listen to this, even if the sand plant somehow is legal, it is morally and economically a disaster.
Thank you, sir. Dale Creasy, Greasy, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. You've got two more minutes in.
I think he's done.
Looks like Cruz Meyer. Peggy Tharp. Bonnie Beasley.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Beasley. I live at 913 South David Street. We bought our home in 1973. Our neighborhood and our home has greatly improved. We've watched it grow and improve over the years. In fact, our home has a historical marker and will be 100 years old in 2017. Washington Highland are our side streets. We are two blocks, two and a half, from the proposed site, the land that Mr. Fluger owns. And it has been of great concern to us. We use Highland daily, regularly, often, to access the many businesses and restaurants that abound between South Bryant and South Oaks. It's our neighborhood. When we cross Bryant, we consider Fort Concho our neighborhood, too. We live in the greater Santa Rita, but we consider Fort Concho as part of our neighborhood. I have been greatly concerned over the sand fracking part of the light manufacturing. Now, thank you, that's been tabled, we're not going to have it. But the other concern, because study after study that I have seen is that silica sand and the dust is dangerous and can be lethal. The other part of that is that the sand fracking business is, and the transloading is relatively new. The sand fracking is a new business, and these studies are not complete yet, but they are being studied, and even what's occurring here in San Angelo is being looked at from around the country, because they picked up our websites and our Facebook. I do want to say that our other concern, and why we are here, and a lot of people have gone home, and thank you for not, is that we are concerned with the other part of the zoning approval, that what you consider light manufacturing. It included the sand fracking was our upset, but also the heavy traffic, the large trucks, the trains that will be there to transload onto these trucks, and then the trucks emptying out onto Hill Street, or Montecito, or where Mr. Fluger finds, where I know he's looking for another deal. But right now, when you go, those, it's not, 75 feet is not much, and these trucks will be going onto a residential street. And these residents have grown up around there, and whether you would build there or not, we've been there long enough that that's our home, and we're taking what we have with our mixed neighborhoods. The one thing that I do want to take time to say before my three minutes are up, is that it is our concern, and why we have supported the appeal, is that light manufacturing in a residential area should stay light manufacturing, and not contain any operations that cause a nuisance or heavy traffic, and will hurt the safety of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley.
Any questions?
Does the board have any questions of Ms. Beasley? Thank you, ma'am. Rich?
I'll help you. Do Rubble is just my name?
Okay.
Thank you, but I withdraw my request for now.
Okay. Well, there's only one more left, so it's now or never. Steve Mahia?
Steve Mahia.
Okay. Okay, well, now, as the parties of interest, in interest, have a rebuttal or additional points to make, which were not previously covered, a maximum of 10 minutes per party and interest shall be granted for these comments. So, moving on down the list, we have Mr. Wardlaw first.
Thank you, gentlemen on this board, and thank you for your service and all the time that you've dedicated to this project over the last three or four months, and your attention and all the stuff you had to read, probably not the most scintillating reading in the world. But let me just say, make a couple of quick points from my 10 minutes. I could not disagree more with Mr. Sam Allen about his characterization of this, and the methodology that went into this decision. The methodology was all wrong, and Mr. Choade agrees with me, and all the citizens in this town agree with me, for what that's worth. We proved up through the Freedom of Information Act request that there were two little bitty letters of no significance in the file. That was all, correspondence was in that file, while the city planning department was deciding whether or not to allow frac sand operation in light manufacturing. That's not very good, and that's not good enough, and that's not a methodology or process that you should brag on. What you had is a total disregard, as we've said before, Sections 305 and 416 of the ordinance, which talk about the difference between light and heavy manufacturing, and the standards that you have to meet to qualify for light manufacturing. And if you don't qualify under those standards, you're in heavy manufacturing. And Mr. Allen, you know, they make this argument about constitutional right to own property and use it the way you want. I'm big on property rights myself, but the Constitution does not allow you to provide or visit a nuisance on your neighbor. That's state law. And Mr. Allen knows it, and Mr. Allen knows that that frac sand, in my opinion, and I've talked to him, he knows that that frac sand operation, sitting there on Hughes Street, and the one on Hill Street, would not fit in a residential neighborhood and would be a nuisance, almost a nuisance per se, under the law. You cannot put something like that next to your house or mine. And you've got this selective, selective use of these statutes, 316, there's all kinds of stuff in there that they've ignored, and we've talked about most of it. They just totally disregard the idea about people coming out there all the time and purchasing property, which is the frac sand. And I just want to correct Mr. Fluger, he may have misunderstood me, but the frac sand is not being purchased by the truckers. It's being purchased for the account of Slumberjay and Halliburton and all the other people. But they're coming out there, and they're customers, and they're coming out there in large numbers on the property, and that's not even, that's not even allowed under 316 or either of the sections of 316. It's just a selective use of these statutes. And that's even borne out more so by the fact that you get this horrendous result that everybody in San Angelo is up in arms about, which is having a silica frac sand operation authorized right next to schools, House of Faith, the city swimming pool, municipal swimming pool, and all this. It's just wrong methodology. And, you know, there's no use in interpreting the city ordinance, and the city ordinances were not drafted, as I pointed out before, to allow certain activities to take place which are clearly in violation of the state nuisance laws. And when I read those laws to you, and the interpretations of them... And when I read those laws to you and the interpretations of them, and it is so important that this board reverse the decision of Mr. Howard and do not allow this to stay with this, this example set and precedent set or any other, the way it stands right now, if you allow this to stand, any other tract of land in San Angelo, zone light manufacturing, will be entitled to receive and will be, will have to receive, the neighbors will have to receive silica frac sand operation if one solar lights or anything that's comparable there, too. So, I hope that you can take care of this problem yourself, and I hope that you can do it in an unanimous way. And I'm not, I'm not for usurping Mr. Fluger's property rights, but enforcement of the zoning ordinance is not that usurpation of anybody's property rights, I promise you. And the law is clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wardlaw. Mr. Fluger, would you like to speak? You've got 10 minutes if you want them.
No, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to resurrect my brain a little bit. The owner of those two, they're called doodle bugs, and they're used out in the field, on the ranch, the two conveyors you were talking about, and the young man's name is Terry Glover that you were asking for. Just want to put it on the record.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, and thank you for your time. It's well after 7:00. The, first thing I got to do, there is one fact that I need to exhibit. It is in the record, and I'm going to be the bad guy here, but I'm going to pull up the zoning map because it's actually relevant information, and that is to show the slide that depicts the zoning laws, one of the first slides there. And so, it doesn't mean we're not going to be careful and continue to be good neighbors, but I think it's relevant that if you look in the upper left-hand corner of the ML tract, that blue, and I can't, I don't have a laser pointer, but the point is, and it needs to be made on the record, and I hate to do this, but the House of Faith building is zoned ML. And so, that just is for the matter of making a public record, and so I'll quit being the bad guy there, but it's actually relevant and supportive, so forgive me, but that's important to do. I think one of the, one of the most important things that we just witnessed is of the gigantic number of people that showed up today, they're gone. I made a list of the folks that showed up, and then I circled the ones who had what I would consider evidence, and it had boiled down to two or three people, and that makes a statement. Number one, it shows that the folks showed up and they made their statement, they presented their evidence, and so due process, again, they addressed their government. But more importantly, they came, they saw, they came what they, they saw what they came for, they were satisfied, they know what the future agenda is, and they'll be back. So even though it wasn't your job, it happened today, and I think that's a good thing. Actually, we created a very fruitful issue and discussion of the zoning laws that the city council will need to deal with. So I have one last point to make, and that relates back to the first question I posed to you. If we're not going to load frac sand, why did we go through all this stuff? And that point is that even though section 305 and 416 do not apply, we went through great time and expense and also consideration to demonstrate that we will comply with a number of other requirements that may or may not be in the zoning code. So hear me clearly, the city's determination is correct. Once you are found to be warehouse and freight, then that's the end of the inquiry. But your takeaway, I would ask, would be to recognize that over and above that, there is still significant compliance with the intent of the statute which is shown in section 305. I want to thank you all for your time. I'm glad to answer any questions or to present Mr. Fluger again if there's any questions of him.
Okay, we're going to allow the board to ask any questions. Then you can start with Mr. Allen if you like, or any party in interest, or their council testifying, member of the public, the senior assistant city attorney, or the planning and development services director. So the board, and ask questions of anybody you want to at this time.
Yes, sir.
Would you compare and contrast, just quickly for me, the differences between the board affirming and the board rejecting the planning department's decision as they pertain to your customer, your client?
Okay, very well. An affirmance means that Mr. Fluger has a clear indication of the use, he has a clear indication of the zoning laws that apply to his property, and he has the intent of, he has received an advisory opinion that allows him to make his investments without the fear that he'll be stopped or he'll spend a lot of money that he'll have to waste at this point. And if you remember Mr. Howard's submission on Friday, he took a great links to show that this was a proper thing. You go on the website, you fill out an onsite form, it goes to City Hall, and that's so that developers don't have to guess at what the zoning board, city council, or other items do. He used the term due diligence. And so when you do your due diligence and you make sure your investments are proper, and then when you can get the city to say, as long as you stay in this box, we'll leave you alone, then that has great value. And as you can imagine, the value of a rail spur and other improvements that would be placed on the property are significant for anyone. Now, with regard to a reversal, with the stipulation that we have put in place here, the frac sand question is off the table, and that means two things, that in this particular instance, the advisory opinion that was sought by Mr. Fluger, and the agreement that that would be tailored, you have the perfect situation. You have the fact that there's not going to be any frac sand, but you have an entrepreneur being given the green light to act within the laws that he can rely on in order to invest in his property. Now, if it's affirmed, then you may be able to transload drill pipes, sacks of drill mud, teddy bears, electronics, whatever, at that site. It's within an ML. The reversal then takes all of that away. And so it's an insult to injury, if you would, that is. It was proper to start with, but he released some of his rights in order to make peace and in order to fit, make sure he fit within the laws. And if that is taken away from him in addition, then I would say that's a, that's a double injury. So we view that as something that would be a significant, would be a significant harm to Mr. Fluger without, the other difference is it requires a vote of four of you to reverse, and an affirmance simply requires a vote of three.
But actually, the only thing we would be taking away would be the right to have the manufacturing zone in ML.
Correct.
I mean, the, that one specific thing. Everything else that can happen in ML could still happen if we reversed the opinion on that.
That's right. Then it's as if it did not happen.
Mr. Solari?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. If, let me ask you a question. Suppose that we believe everything Mr. Allen and Mr. Fluger presented. This is going to be a perfect operation. There won't be a particle of sand, get out of there. Tomorrow, Mr. Fluger says, you know what, I don't think I'll do anything with it, I'll just sell it. Somebody buys it, and we've approved it. And so they say, I'm going to start a silica sand operation, and I don't really see the need to do all that. I'll do it just like they do in Barnhart. Would they be able to get away with that?
They would not be under any constraint not to do anything permitted in the ML zone, including warehouse that could utilize sand, just as Mr. Fluger has stated. He could have gone ahead and put his operation in there. He wanted the reassurance for that particular operation. And so, you know, the focus of this appeal is not whether the ML is a good district or whether or not there can be conditions on it, because that's not what's in front of you. This appeal is from a determination made by the director that affirms the determination made in the letter dated August 11th. And so it affirms that with respect to this one piece of property. So the appeal in front of you is the director's affirmation of the letter dated August 11, 2014, that specifically provides transloading and storage of products used in the oil and gas industry is a permitted use in the ML zone as warehouse and freight movement.
So it wasn't considered at that time, the way, the method that Mr. Fluger was going to do it, it would have been permissible to do it just like the pictures that Mr. Wardlaw showed us?
That's, that's correct. There are, there are other aspects of the ordinances, you know, that can come into play. And if, if, I can just address that for you now, in response to your question regarding the legal aspects of it, under 305, 305 defines manufacturing in industry district. Manufacturing in industry district is different from heavy manufacturing use or light manufacturing use. So you have the word manufacturing in both a zoning district designation, and then you also have it in use designations. Okay? There, I think you could make findings that this property is in a manufacturing in industry district. It's, it, and, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. In an ML district under a section 305, is speaking of districts, that Part B, which addresses ML districts, also, it states that light manufacturing district is intended to provide opportunities for business in the processing, manufacturing, storage, and service industries, which are going to include manufacturing or warehouse uses. And it goes on to say, each of which are characterized by relatively low degree of nuisance and adverse impact on neighboring property. So in making your decision, you can, with respect to this particular facility that's been specifically designated by the property owner, you can address the degree of nuisance and adverse impact under 305, even though the parties have differences of opinion about other sections of the ordinance that include performance standards, which are under the manufacturing when they, the decision is about warehouse use. So I hope that answers your, your question.
Anybody else have a question? Mr. Allen's dying to answer one. Ask him something, Louis.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the question I wanted to answer was yours regarding, because of the timing, tomorrow afternoon, regardless of what you rule, a new property owner will not be able to use this property for transloading frac sand or frac proppants.
Okay.
May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Same question, right? You're not going to answer anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Couple of salient points having to do with this. There's been a misrepresentation on this deed restriction, and I give Mr. Fluger credit for doing this, don't get me wrong, but I'm looking at this, and I know what it says, and I've been looking at it for the last couple of days. This, this restriction's not in perpetuity. It's only, and I'll show it to you, it's only as long as, as the zoning classification is light manufacturing. So he could sell this property tomorrow, and somebody, I don't worry so much about Mr. Fluger personally, as old as he is, he's my age, but if he sells this property tomorrow and somebody else applies for any other zoning permit, zoning, zone change, then once that zone change is granted, then this restriction goes away. That's number one. And then there's, the second important part to note is that he only owns in fee a little more than half of this 10 acres, which he's acknowledged a minute ago. He owns six and has 10. The other four acres that he is leasing is not subject to this deed. So he could, in theory, or somebody else that was unscrupulous, could use that other four acres for a frac sand operation and do something with the other six or parked trucks over there and claim it was not part of the transloading operation. So I think you need to understand that.
Okay.
Am I making myself clear?
Yes, sir. I appreciate that input. Anybody have any questions for anybody else?
Just a point of clarification on a zone change. Would that not have to go before city council and be approved? Zone changes are never automatic. They have to be requested and approved by city council. Is that correct or not?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if the board doesn't have any further questions, we're going to close all discussion and deliberation to the public or to anybody, and just the board's going to discuss it. But before we do that, we're going to take 10 minutes. Okay, once again, this meeting is closed to any evidentiary presentation and argument portion of appeal proceedings. There will be no more comments allowed by any party in interest or the public. The board members will now proceed with discussion and deliberation, and we're going to begin with Mr. Adams. Your opinion, sir.
First of all, I want to thank both sides for your hard work and everything that you have brought before us today and in the past. I've got stacks of paperwork to prove that you guys are very passionate about your position, each side. I do want to, want to just say briefly, I believe in local government, and I believe in guidelines for local government, and I believe that guidelines ought to be followed and adhered to. When we look at what we have done as a city as it relates to our comprehensive plan, I think our comprehensive plan should be in concert to what our bylaws state. That being, that being said, whenever we make a decision as a board, I think first and foremost what needs to be considered is how our decision is going to affect the community. And as it relates to what has been put before us today, I think the community has made their position very clear in how it would affect them. That being said, considering the area, considering, considering area, considering businesses, homes, and et cetera around the area, I think it would be, in my opinion, it would be in the best interest of the citizens of San Angelo if we did not have that type business in that location. Further, I would like to say that I also believe that when considering what type of business should go there, and I know that somebody is going to say, well, the question is, or the issue is, did staff correctly interpret the zoning, the ordinance? But we still have to take into consideration how the area around the business is going to be affected, is going to be affected. I cannot in good conscience support I cannot, in good conscience, support what is being proposed. I thank Mr. Fluger and his representative for what they've done in order to make amends or meet halfway, for lack of a better term. I can appreciate that. I don't feel comfortable, however, with the deed, I can't think of what it is right now, deed restriction, for reasons already, for reasons already mentioned. If you were to ask me, what would I do personally, I would reverse staff's decision, and we would go back and do things a lot differently than they've been done. We have been operating, as it relates to our ordinances, our ordinances have outlived their purpose. And because the city is growing, and because people, businesses are growing, people are doing things differently, a lot of the ordinances we have in place, they're just outdated. So, that's where I am, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
That's it. I'm done.
Mr. Turner?
Yes. Been an awful lot of information, a lot of points made on both sides. Zoning is actually a fairly new concept in the form we have it today. It only goes back roughly 100 years, and San Angelo's only had it for 40. And in a lot of ways, it looks like most of it hasn't been looked at since 1940 in a lot of detail, and even a lot has been changed since then. Looks like some of it didn't track very well, especially on things like putting performance standards every place they needed. So, there's some errors in the ordinance very likely today. But that's not something that the zoning board itself can correct. We're not here to take and make ordinances. We're not here to update ordinances. We have an entire city council that's job is doing the legislative and policymaking process. We're here to take and look at what exists and existed at the beginning of this process, the ordinance, and the laws, and the rules, and everything that were in place when Mr. Fluger started this process. And we have three choices for our decision. We can either affirm the decision and say, that's the way it is, go on about our business. We can reverse the decision, say, that's the way it is, and go on about our business. Or, we can take and say, these are weaknesses we see in the decision, these are changes that we feel should be made. But again, it still has to be within the context of the law that existed then. If the city council puts a moratorium, which apparently is in the planning, that will tend to take care of any of the ongoing issues. The other thing is, points have been made that this isn't all just about frac sand. The ordinance that we're seeing today, from what I'm hearing from the public, has a number of weaknesses because you don't have performance standards for certain of these zoning classifications, and they probably should be there. Mr. Fluger's business could very well probably operate under the restrictions of 416, from what I've heard. I have no doubt of that. But that doesn't mean the next frac sand person coming in would be that diligent, that have that much pride in his business, and just come in and whatever, the cheapest, fastest, quickest way to do it, and we'd have to go through other remedies to deal with issues after the fact, instead of preemptively saying these are limits. That's the weakness I see with the ordinance right now. It doesn't have those preliminary limits, and I think the interpretation that I've seen or heard, that the minimizing nuisance and adverse effects aren't really, I think those actually apply here, even though they may not be specific use standards, but I think that intent needs to be there. And our decision needs to have some way of putting that minimization of adverse impact, nuisance, et cetera, needs to be part of our decision. We can't leave it open where it can be, just because it's a warehouse and freight operation doesn't give it a blank check to be as bad and as much of a nuisance and as much of a hazard as they want, just because we don't have a performance standard. And yes, there are other remedies available, but it should also be clear in the zoning ordinance, these are the edges, these are the boundaries we expect when somebody's operating in this type of business district. If nothing else, it gives the developer, the property owner, the planner, whoever, enough information for we won't have to take and pursue other things, because they know, as soon as they look at the zoning ordinance, there's a problem, as soon as, or what their boundaries are. And right now, it's not there, and it should be.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. John?
I'd like to thank both parties for the hours of enjoyable reading that I did over the last few weeks. I would like to say that one of the things I think that people needed to do in this case is to consider the materials that were being transported in this. Some people have said one thing, as far as it not being hazardous, and others have said that it is, and from being in the medical field, I have read and seen information about silica sand, and I do know that it is hazardous to people that are, have long-term exposure to it, more direct exposure. But I also know that it can cause, or it can exacerbate people that have lung diseases and whatnot. So, there is that problem also. In saying that, I do feel like when Mr. Howard was going over the guidelines that he had set forth for him, the 2007 guidelines, that he went over those and abided by those in good faith. I feel like he complied with what he was allowed to. I understand, as everyone else has said, that hopefully, in some time in the near future, the city council will have an amendment that will, that's, or is being proposed, that will solve this problem, hopefully. But other than that, I think that's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Rourke?
Yeah. I, in reading the, all the notes, it sort of comes down to one thing for me. I walked through the process that Mr. Howard used to get to his decision, and I didn't follow that as the only dark line going down the page. I could see several places where he could take a slightly different position based on the information that was there and come out at a different place. I think everybody has been pretty open and pretty fair and pretty straightforward. I applaud the way the community in general has handled this. I told Lee a while ago, we were talking about this, and I said, well, you know, it's a lot easier than the sign ordinance, and those of us who lived through that can testify to that. I think everybody's been above ground level, everybody has been straightforward, and we haven't had the kind of personal attacks that you sometimes get in these things. At least, I haven't been party to it or observer of it. I have a hard time getting past section 416 in the manufacturing, general performance standards. I don't know how you can read those and come to the conclusion that none of them are going to, are considered in the deal, that there's only, the only thing you can do is go down this, this other way to get to the end point down here. I think frankly, the investigation as to this, on the part of the staff, should have been a lot more in-depth. It should have been more involved. I think, you know, I don't know if this is really true, but Charlotte Farmer, in her supplemental on the way back from Barnhart, Patrick talked about, he might have viewed the classifications differently, had he known what he knew now about the project and various variables within the project. And of course, it goes without saying, that we're always going to have a little more information and better hindsight than somebody that was in the middle of the issue. I think the process and the, and the order in which it went down and investigated all the things are true and correct, but I don't think there was adequate weight given to the community at large in the form of the section 416. So, I would not find, I'd find against the staff's recommendation.
Mean decision.
Sir?
Mean decision.
Yes, I'm sorry, decision.
I believe that I most closely concur with Mr. Rourke. You know, I've never heard anything bad about Mr. Fluger. As a matter of fact, I've always heard good things. I believe he's an honorable man. I believe he would do exactly what he says he would do. But I don't trust anybody else. Just willy-nilly to follow behind him, I think there's always a way around it. And I believe that Mr. Howard, given everything that we've gone through, might very well have made a different decision. I didn't put any weight to hearsay what he said or anything else, but I just think that after all of this, laying all the cards out on the table and really dissecting it, that he might not have seen it the same way. I'm certainly in favor of property rights, and again, if, almost, I would say, if Mr. Fluger said, I want to put that sand plan in, and this is how I'm going to do it, I don't think I'd vote to stop him, because I think he's doing it the right way, and I don't think it will cause harm to anybody around him. But he's not going to do it, and I think we opened the door for somebody doing the same thing somewhere else, and they won't be as diligent as him. So, I'm against the staff's decision also. We'll start back with you, Mr. Adams.
Make a motion to reverse staff's decision as it relates to this matter.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, just based on the record, I don't know if I made myself very clear before, but the decision of the director affirmed the determination made on August 11th, and that says that transloading and storage of products used in the oil and gas industry is a permitted use in the ML zone. Now, the appeal related to this, to a frac sand facility, so if you are going to vote to reverse the director, you can reverse and modify, and I, and so I'm just throwing this out there.
Okay.
That if you do not want, if you do not want to reverse as to any product that is used in the oil and gas industry, then you could, your motion could be to reverse the director with respect to transloading and storage of frac sand only. Otherwise, again, the exact decision that you can affirm, modify, or reverse is that transloading and storage of frac sand, or, excuse me, of products used in the oil and gas industry is a permitted use in the ML zone.
Mr. Adams, do you want to?
Let me ask you a question.
All right.
While you're talking about that. You're saying that we could reverse the decision made by the director as it relates to frac sand?
Correct. It can be modified.
Yeah. Now, in Mr. Fluger's deal with Mr. Allen, we talked about frac sand and proponent's or proper, prop, propellants or whatever, because I don't want to get into this trap again. There's frac sand, you know, there's ceramic balls, there's all sorts of things that are done in this particular vein, so I don't know how specific or unspecific we want to be, but I can cert, I mean, I understand the thing about the frac sand, but they added that other language, which I suspect is a little more cutting-edge than what we have.
Right. I've seen that. Is it P-R-O-P?
P-P-A-N-T-S.
P-P-A-N-T-S?
Proppants.
Proppants, okay. So, you have the authority to modify the decision when you reverse it, and reverse it only as to the frac sand or the proppant, proppants?
Is that what you want to do, Mr. Adams?
Then my motion is to reverse staff's decision as it relates to the frac sand at the, at that locate, at the location.
Do you want to include the?
Okay. And what?
Do you want to include the proppants also?
Yeah, but I'm, I need, before, I need to, I need to get some clarification.
Okay.
On what that is exactly.
Instead of reversing and stating that storage of products used in the oil and gas industry per se are prohibited, you would be limiting the prohibition to frac sand or proppants?
Okay.
Proppants.
Okay. Okay. Then, no, let me withdraw that motion. Let me withdraw, let me withdraw that motion and get my motion together. My motion is to reverse staff's decision as it relates to frac sand and oil and gas products.
No.
Because that could be his motion.
That could be a lot of things.
Yeah. We, you do have to look at the evidence that's presented. I don't think you really had any evidence as to what might be inclusive of the proppants?
Proppants.
Proppants. So, I do think that it's important that you consider limiting it to frac sand, since that's the evidence that you received, and that was the dust and other specific information primarily related to the frac sand. And so, I was just calling that to your attention, as to whether or not your intent would be to prohibit the transloading and storage of all products used in the oil and gas industry, or just the frac sand.
Okay. I'm going to get it right now.
Okay.
I'm going to draw that motion again. If I get it wrong this time, I'm going to shut the hell up.
You got it.
My motion is to reverse staff's decision as it relates to the frac sand. Period.
Second.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Adams and seconded by Mr. Turner. Two. Read that again, Mr. Adams.
This is a learning experience, Fred.
With reverse staff's decision as it relates to the transloading and storage of frac sand.
That's right. All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous.
I think it's that cookie that puts you over the top, Fred.
There is, there is a second matter to address, and that's fine.
The next regular meeting?
We got another.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
There's a second matter to address, and that is, because there is a right to appeal, and you did reverse, you should be making findings of fact and conclusions. If you want to debate those now, in support of your decision, you can do that now, or you can request that proposed findings be brought back to you at the next regular meeting.
We'll do it now.
Okay?
I based my decision on the evidence presented by Mr. Wardlaw, though I don't I based my decision on the evidence presented by Mr. Wardlaw, though I don't think it has anything to do with Mr. Fluger, but if we could have that type of nuisance with sand getting in the air, trucks running, noise, vibration, everything that he showed us evidence of, that's, that's every one of the points. And I think he proved that with his video evidence, photos.
And the documentary evidence is that?
Documentary evidence.
Are you taking that into account?
Yes, sir. Mr. John, why did you vote the way you voted?
I feel like the main problem here was the frac sand, the material that was, was proposed to be transloading. I would commend Mr. Fluger in that what he presented and the equipment that he was proposing to use, it looked like to me that that would be the very best way to do that, but it comes down to hazardous material, it's hazardous material. If there is a, an accident of any sort there, then you, then you have to deal with that. So in the, in the end, I think it came to the, the actual material itself that is the reason why I voted that way.
And I based mine on B, manufacturing and production, the interpretation of that as being more general than specific and on 305, the general performance standards.
I based my decision on, again, reading the ordinance as a whole, including the part where light manufacturing is supposed to mitigate nuisance and hazards and I thought that those were not given enough weight, that part of the ordinance, even though it is more general, I think that that needed more weight given to it than what was given to it in the original decision. I think the bulk of the decision was very good, but it's a weakness in the ordinance that it doesn't really carry the intent of the ordinance through the entire ordinance. And we corrected at least a small portion of that today. Thank you.
My, my decision is based kind of like Mr. Turner's. I don't think that we gave enough consideration, enough weight to what we consider a nuisance and I, because of that, I think that it was really important that we did not place our citizens in a position where we're, we're putting an unnecessary hardship on, on them. I feel that the, the ordinance, as I said, I think we've outlived it, it's kind of out, it's outdated, but we still have to take into consideration the parties that are going to be affected immediately and, and I just didn't feel that enough weight was given to possible nuisances that could be, that could arise from that.
Is, could we get a motion that the findings expressed by each of the members of the board in the application of the ordinance, including 305B, support the decision that you've made?
Somebody?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Rourke, seconded by Mr. Adams. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay, the next regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, March the 2nd, 2015, in the McLeish Convention Center. The February 2nd, 2015 meeting of the zoning board of adjustment is ready for adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. Turner to adjourn. All those in favor, the meeting is adjourned.